Good evening. I call this October 13th, 2020 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. To maintain the safety of town residents, staff, and the town council while following guidelines related to social distancing and limited public gatherings, this meeting is being facilitated electronically via Teams meeting. All council members will be fully able to participate in this evening's work. Active citizen participation is always important to town council. Public comments were accepted from 9:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. today. This meeting is being streamed on the Town of Morrisville Facebook page, and on October 16th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to A link to this page will also be placed on the Town of Morrisville social media pages. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future town council meetings, or feel free to email townclerk@townofmorrisville.org with any questions. Eric Smith, our town clerk, will now conduct a roll call about council members, all of whom are participating in this meeting remotely.
Mayor Colley.
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Present.
Councilmember Fender.
Present.
Councilmember Garamella.
Present.
Councilmember Rao.
Present.
Councilmember Robati.
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Present.
All councils present.
Thank you, sir. Prior to further action, I will ask if there is a motion and second to invoke Rule 19. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I'll make a motion to invoke Rule 19.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
I have a second from Councilmember Rao. If Town Clerk can please conduct a roll call vote on that motion, please.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati. Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you again. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, town council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does any council member have any such conflict?
None.
Okay, hearing and seeing none, I entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved.
I have the motion from Councilmember Rao. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second from Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson. Mr. Smith, if you could do the honors, please.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to adopt the regular agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have an agenda. We are now at item 5, Administrative Reports. We have one administrative report this evening, Airport Boulevard Extension Phase 1 Update. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has any questions. Are there any questions? Okay. Seeing none in the chat and hearing none, we will move on. There are, item 6, Presentations. There are four presentations tonight. Proclamation recognizing October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, proclamation recognizing October 2020 as Community Planning Month, a proclamation recognizing October as Bullying Prevention Month, and a sign code update presentation. For the proclamation recognizing October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, I'd ask Mayor Protem Liz Johnson to please read that on behalf of the council.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to read this proclamation in honor of all those victims of domestic violence and in honor of all those who worked tirelessly to end the cycle of abuse. And we're very fortunate to have several nonprofits locally that help to this end. Nonprofits like Interactive Wake County and Kirin that works with our South Asian community. So the proclamation reads, in recognition, or I'm sorry, proclamation is recognizing October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is defined as the willful intimidation, physical assault, battery, sexual assault, and/or abusive behavior as part of a systematic pattern of power and control perpetuated by one intimate partner against another. It includes physical violence, sexual violence, psychological violence, and emotional abuse. Whereas in the United States, more than 10 million adults experience domestic violence annually. And whereas 1 in 4 women and 1 in 9 men experience severe intimate partner physical violence, intimate partner sexual violence, and/or intimate partner stalking. And whereas nearly 1 in 10 women in the United States and 1 in 71 men have been raped by an intimate partner in her or his lifetime. And whereas 1 in 2 female murder victims and 1 in 13 male murder victims are killed by intimate partners. Whereas from 2016 through 2018, the number of intimate partner violence victimizations in the United States increased 42%. And whereas as of 2018, intimate partner violence accounts for 20% of all violent crime, at least 19% of reported domestic violence involves the use of a weapon and the presence of a gun in a domestic violence situation increases the risk of homicide by 500%. And whereas, on average, 4 women are murdered by an intimate partner every day in the United States. And whereas domestic violence does not discriminate and touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas research shows that creating communities where people are connected, supportive, and care for one another can reduce incidence of domestic violence. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize the month of October 2020 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urges all residents to become involved in efforts to prevent and respond to domestic violence and show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims.
Thank you very much for reading that on the council's behalf. At this time, at item 6B, proclamation recognizing October 2020 as Community Planning Month, I'll recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Mayor, I wasn't prepared to read that.
Okay. I will be happy to read that on the council's behalf. I apologize. This is a proclamation recognizing October as Community Planning Month. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and community planning and planners can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people live, work, and play. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be equally involved in making choices that determine the shared vision of their neighborhoods and the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our neighborhoods and environment. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Planning and Zoning Board and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the Town of Morrisville. And whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional community and regional planners of Morrisville and extend our heartfelt thanks to the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize the month of October 2020 as Community Planning Month in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Thank you. We are now at item 8C, proclamation recognizing October as Bullying Prevention Month. I'll recognize Councilmember Rao to read this proclamation on behalf of the council, please.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor for me to read this proclamation, and I want to thank Mayor Dick Sears and the Mayors Against Bullying Campaign, along with other organizations that are addressing this very critical issue for all of us as a community. So here is our proclamation recognizing October as Bullying Prevention Month. Whereas bullying is the physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people and occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technology. And whereas, various researchers conclude that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually, as almost 30% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or a victim. And whereas, targets of bullying are more likely to require lifelong physical, emotional, and learning problems. And whereas, students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, and attending community activities. Children who witness bullying often feel less secure or more fearful and intimidated. And whereas, children who bully are at a greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as Bullying Prevention Month and further proclaim that Town Morrisville's schools, students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, and community organizations are encouraged to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer. Signed off by Mayor TJ Colley and the Town Council of Morrisville.
Thank you, sir. We are now at item 6D, and Michelle Stiegel, Planning Director, will introduce the final presentation, a sign code update presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. I wanted to introduce Greg Jones, who is the consultant from Ansel Glink working on this project for us. This evening, he is going to provide an overview of the Sign Code Update project, where we've been, and just try and add some context to the proposed draft that you will see at your next meeting on October 27th. So Greg, I will hand it over to you.
Great, thanks, Michelle. Can everyone hear me okay? All right, excellent. Well, I just wanted to say a good evening to the mayor and the council. Thank you all for having me tonight. My name's Greg Jones. I'm a partner with the law firm of Ansel Glink in Chicago. I wish I was with you in person tonight, but this is, I guess, the best we can do this year. So this sign code update has been a long-running effort. We started back in 2017 and have certainly experienced a few detours, including a pandemic. But we continue to be excited about helping the town finish what it started a few years ago. And that is to align the sign code with current First Amendment law. Now, tonight's presentation isn't intended to be a deep dive into the sign code revisions. Instead, this is more of an opportunity to quickly refresh the council on this project as we move towards several upcoming conversations, including, as Michelle noted, one at the next meeting on the 27th. Next slide, please. I'm sorry, if we could forward to the PowerPoint, that would be great. All right, and one more purpose. There we go. Perfect. Thank you so much. Oh, as I touched on a little earlier, and has certainly been discussed before, the town started this effort primarily in response to the Supreme Court decision in the case of Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, Arizona. Reed turned local sign regulation on its head. And that's not just in Morrisville or North Carolina, but across the entire country. Before Reed, many, if not most, communities enforced regulations specifically based on sign type. So for example, a lot of communities enforced one set of regulations for drive-through menu boards, another set of regulations for real estate signs, and yet another set for garage sale signs, and the list goes on and on and on. And there was good law supporting this approach until the Supreme Court decided the Reed case, which, much to everyone's surprise, found that these types of regulations were content-based and, in the case of Gilbert, Arizona, invalid. So as a reminder, content-based regulations regulate a sign based on what the sign sets or what the sign's message is. And the Supreme Court found, for example, that regulations that allowed a property to have more for-sale signs located on that property than, say, garage sale signs constituted a content-based regulation. So the town, in that case, had made it more difficult for a resident to communicate about his or her garage sale than he or she could communicate about selling her home. And in that case, the court found that the town was favoring one type of speech, for-sale signs, over another type of speech, garage sales. Morrisville's sign code, like a lot of other communities, includes many of these same types of regulations that the Supreme Court found to be unconstitutional in the Reed case. So the principal focus of the sign code update is to replace these regulations with legal, defensible, and content-neutral standards. These new standards regulate signage based on objective variables, like the sign's size, the sign's location, what the sign is made of, and similar criteria that are completely unrelated to the message that is listed on the sign. The update is also intended to address some lingering administrative issues that staff had flagged, including banners, issues with poll signs, gas station signage, and a few others. And of course, like any sign code update, or any code update for that matter, we wanted to make the final product more user-friendly for the folks that are interacting with the sign code on a regular basis. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this slide just shows where we've been and where we're going. As I mentioned earlier, the project started back in the summer of 2017. A necessary first step to any code update project is public outreach, and that's absolutely where we began. We conducted several days of stakeholder interviews with people that interact with and are impacted by the sign code on a regular basis. That included developers, home builders, realtors, Planning and Zoning Board members, elected officials. Mayor Colley, I think we sat down with you as well as Mayor Protem Johnson and Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson way back when. We certainly worked closely with staff. We met with sign vendors, property managers, Chamber of Commerce reps, and others in an effort to try and cast a wide net and solicit feedback on what parts of the sign code were working and what parts weren't. We distilled that public feedback and our own independent review of the town's sign code into a key issues report that analyzed the sign code and highlighted areas for improvement. That key issues report was presented at the Town Council back in the fall of 2017. It's also included in tonight's packet, and that's because it's an important document. It really provides the basis and support for the actual code amendments that the Town Council will discuss this month. We presented that key issues report to the Planning and Zoning Board over the course of a couple of meetings this summer and early fall. And the Planning and Zoning Board provided a recommendation for approval of the draft amendments. And then we'll again be talking about that with the Town Council later on. The next few slides highlight some of the larger proposed changes to the sign code that the Town Council will consider in the coming weeks. This table right here identifies just a few examples of content-based regulations that are in the sign code. A lot of these signs fall under the heading of temporary signs, including signs for special events, for-sale signs, contractor signs, and a few others. Regulations based on these types of sign designations need to go. And we spent significant time evaluating how best to reclassify these signs to limit legal liability for the town, while also, and equally as important, preserving the town's ability to meet its regulatory goal. The idea here wasn't to replace the town's content-based regulations with no regulations. That's not a reasonable or desirable outcome for the town. Instead, we're trying to preserve and enhance the town's regulations, but in a legal way. And we also wanted to align the town's sign regulations with some recent changes in North Carolina statutory law. Next slide, please. Thank you. Another issue we discovered while reviewing the sign code was its tendency to regulate signage based on the type of business. And this is a problematic approach. There are good arguments that this type of regulation qualifies as a content-based regulation. It could reasonably see, you know, an insurance office operator questioning why it is entitled to less signage than a medical office operator. It's a good question. And if the town's unable to demonstrate that it has a compelling governmental interest in no less intrusive way to advance that interest, then these types of distinctions between relatively comparable businesses will likely fail. So to avoid those claims, we reworked the sign code to rely primarily on a property zoning designation and not its use. This is a tried and true method of sign regulation that provides a strong defense to claims that the town's code is content-based. Next slide, please. We also revised the town's, or excuse me, the sign code's purpose statement to emphasize both the content neutrality of the regulations and the legitimate reason the town has for regulating sign. These are critical code provisions in the event that the town ever faces a legal challenge. We also reworked the town's illuminated and electronic sign regulations and spent significant time creating and incorporating content-neutral, modern definitions into the sign code. Those are particularly critical. You know, strong definitions are really the bedrock of any good code. But within the sign code context, which has implications with First Amendment law and other legal concepts that are larger than just the town code, strong definitions provide a very good defense. Next slide, please. Also addressed some substantive regulations out of the current code. The updated draft code would prohibit new poll signs and signage in the right of way, again, trying to limit public safety concerns here. The code would require abandoned signs to be removed and require developers to provide landscaping and some beautification around monuments. And as I mentioned earlier, we also want to make the code as accessible and user-friendly as possible. We're using a lot of tables. We're trying to get away from large blocks of text things. We want to make this so someone could pick it up and understand it without having to either be either a sign vendor or an attorney, which is always a good goal. Next slide, please. We already briefly touched on stakeholder engagement in the interviews we conducted earlier. This slide identifies all the folks in all the groups that we've spoke with and been working with, staff has been working with and will continue to work with these groups to solicit feedback on the updated code. There's some significant outreach efforts during and before the Planning and Zoning Board meetings. I know those are underway and ongoing now too, as well. Next slide, please. Stakeholder feedback we received through our efforts has generally been positive, and particularly when compared with regulations, sign regulations enforced by some neighboring communities. And this really matters. Businesses talk, and the regulatory environment in a community absolutely factors into decisions concerning where a business will locate and where they'll invest. The code revisions incorporate some additional flexibility for promotional signage, recognizing that the most critical time for most new businesses is the run-up to grand opening and the first few weeks that immediately follow. And we worked to find considerate ways to support the town's businesses without compromising the town's aesthetic goals or character. Next slide, please. This is just a quick overview of our next steps. The October 27th meeting is scheduled for a deeper dive into the revised code. It should be a great opportunity to discuss specifics. And then the public hearing and potential adoption are targeted for November of this year. Next slide, please. And that concludes my presentation for this evening. I want to thank the council and the mayor again for their time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you very much. If any council members have any questions for Mr. Jones or our planning director, Ms. Stiegel, please put them in the chat, and I'll recognize you. While we're waiting, I'd like to recognize that our Planning and Zoning Board delved into this and spent a lot of time in their recent meeting going over these. So we really appreciate all of their efforts as well. Okay. I don't see any requests for questions or anything in the chat. We really appreciate your time and your efforts trying to make sure that we are aligned with the law, which is going to be really important. And as you mentioned, we're not looking to reduce. We're trying to just enhance our sign regulations in such a way that it gives clarity to everyone, which is really important. So thank you very much, Mr. Jones. We look forward to seeing those next steps as you pointed them out.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything final, Ms. Stiegel?
No, Mayor. Don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are now on item 7, Public Comment. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received.
Thank you, sir. There were two public comments received. The first public comment was from Tracy Montrose, 1275 Pennsylvania Avenue Northwest, Suite 1300, Washington, DC. Dear members of the Town of Morrisville Town Council, Airlines for America appreciates the opportunity to comment in opposition to a recently proposed amendment to the town's land use plan for and request to rezon the property at 1001 Airport Boulevard. A4A is the principal trade and service organization of the United States airline industry and member airlines. As responsible members of the communities we serve, US Airlines continuously deploy newer and quieter aircraft technology and implement noise abatement operational procedures to minimize noise impacts on communities surrounding airports. Indeed, US Airlines have played a critical role in the tremendous reductions in aircraft noise exposure achieved in the United States to date, reducing the number of people exposed to significant levels of aircraft noise in the United States by 94% since 1975, while more than quadrupling deployments. But this commitment to reduce noise impacts cannot solely be borne by the airlines. All relevant stakeholders must use their respective authorities to achieve meaningful, lasting land use noise compatibility between an airport and its neighbors. As such, we respectfully request the Town Council to decline to approve proposed CPA 2020 and RES 336-2020 to prevent residential encroachment on the Raleigh-Durham International Airport and maintain the airport's and community's reputation for successfully promoting noise-compatible land uses. Both the Federal Aviation Administration in the United States and the United Nations International Civil Aviation Organization recognize the importance of thoughtful planning to achieve meaningful, lasting land use noise compatibility. These agencies, policies, and guidelines underscore the need for balance between airports and their neighbors in that achieving land use noise compatibility requires collaboration by airport proprietors, aircraft operators, and local zoning authorities, each playing a role to minimize noise exposure to the surrounding communities. In fact, airlines serving RDU, the RDU Airport Authority, and surrounding communities have come together before to uphold a just balance between the airport and its neighbors. In the face of mounting noise complaints and litigation during the late 1980s and early 1990s, these stakeholders came together to adopt practices, a noise rule, and overlay districts that resulted in shared responsibilities and obligations to achieve land use noise compatibility. RDU's airlines remain committed to successfully balancing stakeholder needs, but we cannot do it alone. The Town of Morrisville must do its part to prevent encroachment of residential development on the airport. While we do not wish to be engaged in issues involving specific projects, we note that the two requests from Equator Capital Management respectfully calling for redesignation and rezoning of the property at 1001 Airport Boulevard would place the inhabitants and patrons of the resulting development within RDU's 65 decibel day-night level contour, meaning within the geographic area FAA recognizes is on the threshold of significant aircraft noise exposure. This is the very reason why the airport overlay district includes this property. As currently zoned, the As currently zoned, the property does not allow for residential development, and rightly so. Changing the land use plan and rezoning the property would go against the careful accord the airport and community struck years ago. Moreover, allowing residential development in an area that close to the airport is a precursor for more issues down the road as residents become flustered with aircraft noise and begin demanding mitigations from the town, RDU, airlines, and FAA. As airlines continue to invest in technology and operating practices to lessen community noise impacts, we continue to count on RDU, AA, and surrounding communities to prevent the encroachment of incompatible land uses like those proposed by Equator Capital Management. Should the town council decide to approve these requests, the property will be one step closer to allowing residential development. Approving these two requests would therefore create imbalance in this delicate system, undermining decades of work to ensure harmony between RDU and its surrounding communities and creating a precedent that would encourage further encroachment into areas zoned against incompatible uses with RDU. For these reasons, we urge the town council to reject Equator Capital's management's request. Thank you in advance for your consideration of these comments. We will be pleased to provide any additional information or answer any questions the council may have as it considers its decision in this matter. The second comment that we received is from William C. Sandifer, Senior Vice President and Chief Operating Officer, RDU Airport Authority, 1000 Trade Drive, RDU Airport, North Carolina. Dear members of Town Council, please accept this letter as formal objection by the Raleigh Durham Airport Authority to the above referenced land use plan amendment and rezoning. These amendments, if approved, could allow a future residential use of this property. The subject property lies approximately one mile from the approach end of our largest commercial runway along the extended runway center line and is subject to frequent arrival and departure overflights at all hours of the day. Allowing a residential use in this area would create an incompatible land use with airport operations. Although we recognize that the existing airport overlay district would currently prohibit a residential use, the town is nearing completion of a new comprehensive land plan and will consider potential future amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, including changes to the airport overlay district. Any changes to the existing airport overlay district that would allow residential uses in areas currently prohibited will be opposed by the authority. Since this proposal is one step closer to creating future residential uses in this area, we are compelled by our obligations to the Federal Aviation Administration to oppose its approval. Sincerely, Raleigh Durham Airport Authority. All comments received were provided to council in their entirety, and they will be entered into the public record.
Mayor Colley, I believe you may be muted.
I was. I was muted. I apologize. Thank you very much for your help by reading those items. We are now at item eight, action items. There are two action items on tonight's agenda. A resolution authorizing an agreement with Edifice LLC and a proposed amendment of the land use plan and zoning map for Zero Morrisville Carpet and Roof. Brandon Zudema, Assistant Town Manager, will discuss the first item. Mr. Zudema.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Aaron, if you could take it to the PowerPoint, and then I'll request control if that's all right. Okay. Again, good evening. As you know, we came to you at the last meeting and had conversation with you in regards to a request to fund the design work for a new fire station. As we did that, we got some additional questions in regards to a couple of different items. One of those being the current fire station two, and particularly us sharing information that NC DOT was in fact not going to take the fire station itself. They were going to take a portion of the property, but not impact the building. Also had some questions about the proposed design-build contract and then the project timeline. So we wanted to come back tonight to answer some of those questions and to further this discussion with you. So in terms of current fire station two, this is an overview map of that property. We actually own two properties there as the town. This top portion is 5651 McCrimmon Parkway. That was actually purchased about two and a half years ago. It's 1.35 acres, and the most recent appraisal was about $628,000. And then the property that the fire station itself rests on, which was purchased in 1998. We actually just, if you're curious, paid $230,000 for it back in 1998. It is 3.6 acres, and the most recent appraisal was $3.5 million for the property and the building. So to give you a little more detail on the impact of the road project from NC 54 widening, again, this total site is 3.6 acres, and DOT will be taking approximately 0.32 acres or the portion shown in red, on your screen, about 9% of that total parcel. And you had asked some questions about negotiations with NC DOT. And I actually just got a follow-up back from them today that they are not yet prepared to begin those negotiations until they have finalized some plans later this year or perhaps even into January of 2021. So we won't begin any active formal negotiations as to what their payment would be for that portion of the property for several months. So in terms of the impact on current fire station two, the red line shows where the new roadway will go from DOT or their right-of-way will go. If you look and see where the green is, that's where we will lose parking spaces, and we would likely just put grass back in there. A small blue square here is a slight extension of that sidewalk to bring it across into the parking lot. And then shown in blue, where we will replace the six parking spaces that are being removed as a result of the extension of the right-of-way up to the front of the building for the existing fire station. Our current estimate is approximately $50,000 to do those parking spaces. We've talked with planning and with engineering, and that's just a rough estimate given the expectation to build six parking spaces there. So in terms of fire station two, the building is 21 years old. The anticipated useful life at time of construction was 30-plus perhaps years. However, you have been hearing since at least 2018 when Morrisville Fire Rescue did the fire protection study and indicated in that report to you that there was a need to begin to address the useful life of fire station two. The most current significant and immediate needs are replacement of the generator, which would be about $100,000. We have an issue with settling in the corner of the truck bay. Our initial estimate is about $60,000 to make that repair. And then there is a need to replace HVAC at the tune of about $10,000. And we've held off on each of those over the past year or several months beyond that because of the expectation that the building would be replaced. So with the building staying, those are things that'll have to be reconsidered. The other considerations for the current fire station we would ask you to take into mind is staff capacity, the number of bedrooms there versus what might be needed in the future for operations, life space needs. The building has been renovated on more than one occasion and is somewhat limited in terms of the space available to the firefighters, particularly when they're overnight. Turnout gear storage, there are some issues with deterioration related to UV light access there. Outdated furniture fixtures and equipment that would need to be updated. As you saw in the previous diagram, that new right-of-way comes basically to the front of the building. So while it does not touch the building and does not make the building unusable, it is not the most user-friendly environment when that roadway comes right up essentially to the front door of the building or to the sidewalk. And then just general firefighter safety. Chief Krittl could go into a lot more information about how newer technology that's available in newer fire stations helps to keep our firefighters safe and better prepared to do their jobs. So ultimately, when we get to that decision, a fire station two replacement decision will be based on a number of factors, including the end-of-life analysis of the building, the ability to further improve service delivery in the three-district model utilizing the property on Paramount Parkway, general working conditions for fire department staff, and then any considerations as to other uses for those two properties on Chapel Hill Road and/or the potential sale of those two properties on Chapel Hill Road. And then in terms of moving that fire station, ADW, our architect, in the design-build process, has provided a fire station design that is viable on both the Harris Mill Road property and on the Paramount Parkway, the Wake Tech site. That was one of the questions we had last time, was whether that could be done. So as an example, this is a drawing from ADW. And as you can see, this is Paramount Parkway at the bottom. And then this is the new campus roadway that would be accessed onto the property. So this has its main entrance out onto Paramount Parkway. The orange or brown is the fire station. And then there is parking, and then that secondary entrance off of the access roadway that is built on this site. And then you would also see that there is room for future expansion in this area and also a future bay if needed to expand the capacity of the fire department. Mayor Colley, did you want me to take a question now or wait till I was done?
Please complete your presentation, then we'll take questions and comments from all. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. So looking then from fire station two relocating to Paramount Parkway, the other question, the other topic to discuss is the fire station three relocation. We recommended to you last time that rather than move station two now, since it is not being disrupted, would be to bring ladder 23 or that company that's at Cary Station seven into the fire station on Harris Mill Road. So the explanation and justification behind that would be first and foremost that that co-location was always intended to be a temporary situation. There was never a desire to keep our apparatus outside of the town. We have a gentleman's agreement in essence that there is shared space there until that call load for that company would be balanced more into town as opposed to the county response, and we are rapidly approaching that now. And again, bringing station three or ladder 23 into town immediately provides better service to the northwest area of town, particularly including Kits Creek, Breckenridge, and the areas where our RTP county contract is in that area. And again, the CAM model is also a factor in this. You've heard us talk before about how the CAM model has improved overall response. That is true for this station as well. Having that equipment, that apparatus in town is more practical into the CAM model. And this would also assist with implementation of a true three-district response from three stations strategically located in the town based on current and future fire service demand. So here is that Harris Mill Road site. Again, Harris Mill is out here. Down at the bottom would be McCrimmon. And so you can see on this site, it is exactly the same diagram. It shifted a little bit to match this roadway, but it has essentially the same layout. It again has a future expansion on the side of the building here and room on this side for a future bay to be added to the building when and if needed in the future. So this site totals about 6.3 acres. And the fire station will take approximately two and a half acres of that. There is existing stormwater on the site, which is approximately 0.9 acres. So that leaves approximately 2.9 acres that could be used for another town need or interest. And as you can see where this, it's a little tough to see in the diagram, I apologize, but right here, it is marked for a future driveway to give access to the remainder of the property. I would also suggest that depending on how discussions might go about the property, we could specifically work with ADW to accommodate additional parking with this design for other uses on the site. And we've begun that conversation with them already. So one of the things that got questioned was the cost of doing the Harris Mill Road site. The site work there is approximately $1.2 million. We'll tell you that that is a very detailed site work estimate. It is broken out into multiple, multiple categories by ADW based on the site and their examination of it. Again, I've already spoken to the possibility for other site uses as we develop this design. Just as a couple of comparables, ADW has done other work in the area or in the state. Most recently, Cary Fire Station Number Nine, they did a little over a million dollars in site work there. And again, as was pointed out by Chief Krittl, to me, that was an existing site with a building on it. So there was less work to do in terms of preparing the site for a structure. And then ADW recently did the fire station number seven in Greensboro, and the site work there was approximately 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. So not an out-of-line estimate, given the size of the site and putting a fire station on it. And I know that there are some additional questions about the design on both sites and how that would relate to the construction of those fire stations. So proceeding with design now will allow us to answer some of those questions before decisions have to necessarily be made about the actual construction of the fire station. So back to a slide you've seen before. Just a reminder, what we're asking you to do is to approve the $475,000 to allow for design and pre-construction for the new fire station. We currently have approximately $750,000 that is unencumbered in the Public Safety Capital Project Fund. Of that, about 350 is allocated to a traffic safety, or excuse me, a traffic preemption project. However, that is delayed because of some issues with the Town of Cary. So I say all that to say that were you to adopt or approve the $475,000 to allow design to continue, there is no additional general fund allocation necessary. The money is already in that Public Safety Capital Project Fund. So again, what does this design-build contract that we're asking you to consider do? It does encumber the 475 for full design and pre-construction. It also puts a cap on project costs for the fire station as designed at $5.85 million, but it does not encumber any of that $5.85 million now. Any construction funding or the phase-two funding would be a part of FY 2022 and/or bond and CIP budget discussions, and we would bring back a contract modification with actual construction costs for your approval later next late spring, early summer. So last slide would be the timeline. Were you to be willing to approve the phase-one contract for design and pre-construction tonight, schematic design would begin essentially tomorrow, and that would take approximately a year through September of next year. Construction funding discussion would occur as part of the FY 22 budget meetings that are coming up this winter. We would bring back that phase-two contract for construction costs in summer of next year, and we would anticipate that construction would begin in October and fall of '21, and substantial completion of station number three on Harris Mill Road would be completed in October of 2022. The consideration of station number two replacement would be a part of ongoing CIP planning and could be worked into your other prioritization efforts that are coming up this fall and into future years. So Mayor, that is the presentation. Be happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. I will begin, and then if any other council members have comments or questions, please put yourself into the chat. I'll recognize that. Okay, so the way I understand it, we are talking about moving station three, and that's really the ask for tonight and for the planning and design of that. So it's my understanding.
Well, if I could, if I could address that real quick, sir. So what we're asking for tonight is the funding for the design and pre-construction work. So that could be fire station three on Harris Mill Road, but the allocation of the $475,000 tonight is not a commitment to build a fire station anywhere necessarily. It's a commitment to let us go through design while we continue to have discussion about the construction of theoretically fire station three moving to Harris Mill Road and then station two later moving to Paramount. But tonight is not a commitment to build a fire station.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. So please correct me if I'm wrong, but fire is generally based on geography, the amount of capacity you need firefighters and stations, rather than police, which is more based on population. So just. So just with that general thought, I would like to do what we can to make sure that we're doing this once for 30 years and being done. At least for this first one on Harris Mill where we have enough space to do whatever we need. So can you allay my possible concern that we might be trying to do a one-size-fits-all, even though the Paramount site might be a little bit smaller and might not eventually meet our needs? But I see that the diagram you showed me on both sites, they have a future bay and room for future expansion. So can I take from that that either of these buildings is going to be plenty big to meet our needs for 30-plus years?
That is the plan, yes, sir. So both buildings would be built now to meet current needs, which would be to put the apparatus that is currently in service at those stations. But there is specific plan to allow for expansion in the future when needed so that we would meet the long-term needs of fire service in Morrisville. Yes, sir.
So I'd be interested in knowing the pros and cons of building to those future needs now rather than having to retrofit or add on later. If that would be more cost-effective doing that in this early part of the process, I'd be much more interested in knowing if that could be done now. And we might have a bay that's not being used for a while, but we don't have to pay much higher cost later. So that would be something that I would personally be interested in knowing if we could take care of that and know that we're set for a long time rather than have to come back and spend millions sometime down the road. So that's a hard question to answer right away.
Yes, sir. And so we, I can, you know, give you an answer tonight. Chief Criddle is on the call. I think he could speak to that tonight. I think the short version is essentially what you said, which is it would be more expensive now to build the full building than it would be to do it with a plan for expansion in the future. But I'll let Chief Criddle come in as well briefly.
Yeah, just so you know, the planned future expansion is really in case the fire service develops to a point where, okay, there's six seats on a fire truck. And if we ever, you know, several years ago, there were a lot of fire trucks riding around with two people. These stations are both designed for the growth to go up to two companies with four people apiece. If we ever expanded the fire service in the next 50 years to a spot where maybe that it's, you know, fire service common practice to put six people on a rig, then that building would need to be expanded, and there's room for that to happen. But I don't necessarily say that that's something that is in that immediate future that it would ever be that way. So those buildings are both set up for programming that is foreseeable in what I would consider a 50-year plan. We are a quaint concept. We're going to be there until, until the workload drives that. And then both stations are set up to go to an engine ladder model if needed at four people per rig, which is, in my opinion, the 50-year foreseeable future growth of those buildings. But if something crazy happens and you end up with six people per rig, which, you know, I'm sure when we built two, we thought we were looking far enough in the future. But this is an attempt to look beyond and get out of the box with the potential to build. But it's ready for what is foreseeable in the next, I would say, 50 years.
So current plans without the extra bay, without the future expansion, meet our 50-year needs?
Yeah, both, both the stations are set up right now that if, in the next 50 years, the Morrisville Fire Department is running an engine ladder model, all three stations in the three-station model with these two added would hold that programming.
Okay, I really appreciate you clarifying that for me. Makes me feel better about that. Okay, those are my questions. I will now recognize we have three council members with questions. I'll first recognize Councilmember Fender, then Councilmember Garamella, then Councilmember Rao. Ms. Fender.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Brandon, do you mind going back one or two slides to the schedule? Maybe not that far back. Maybe it was just one slide. Yes, there. For the schematic design, what is, what encompasses the schematic design? At the end of that phase, will we come out of there with issue for construction drawings?
Yes, we will be, at the end of that phase, we would be ready to begin applying for construction permits, and we would have full design for the building.
Okay, and then, and I'm assuming from the other information that you've given, because this is design-build, we're not going out for construction bids. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And Edifice is our contractor?
That is correct.
Okay, so then my other question is, that schematic design phase is an awful long phase before we start construction. Will we be having, will there be any milestones during that time where we're going to come back together and at least be able to see, you know, some preliminary designs?
Yes, I think that would be fair to expect that as we start getting going and start having conversations about sort of what is in and what is it, what is out based on budget. We would certainly be coming back to you before, you know, summer with, with sort of a mid-process update, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I'd definitely be interested in seeing some midpoint design, like the site plan architecturally and then, well, the site plan. And then my last question concerns, talked about there being a cap on project costs for the 5.85 million. Does that include construction costs?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a procedure that if going through their design phase and site work, they determine that construction costs are going to be more, they'll go through like a change order process?
So what, what they're saying with this design-build contract, and that's the unique aspect of having the construction company be part of the design process for us, is that they're already directly involved in all these conversations. And so they are, they have helped us come to that 5.8 number. So they are basically saying by going into this contract that they will build the fire station that we have agreed to for that number. And if there have to be, you know, tweaks or modifications, they will, that we will stay at that budget number based on what they have already seen and already talked to us about.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, then Councilmember Rao, please.
Sure. Brandon, I am very satisfied with this presentation. It gives a full view of how things are getting done. I wish we had this presentation the first time.
Me too.
Yeah, but I think well-done job. Thanks for coming and talking to me. I think I am good. The only question I have is which of the fire station will be named after Criddle?
We're going to work that out along the way.
Okay.
So thank you for your feedback on the prior session and in our meeting. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Rabadi, please.
I just want to know, as we, first of all, great presentation, and it's really helpful to know that the 475,000 doesn't certainly mean that we're committed to construction. I just want either the chief or you, Brandon, to just walk me through the criteria. And if you're repeating yourself, I apologize. I just want to make sure I get a better handle of what are the factors that would affect us doing both the stations sooner than later? And the reason I say that is that I understand the Fire Station Three, but with Fire Station Two not being taken, are we just basically saying that if we had a more optimized Fire Station Two, that it would do what Chief Criddle said? It would basically allow us to, to be better optimized for a 50-year period? And I guess that's what Mayor Colley was asking was, you know, is it better to do it right now, sooner than later, for the fire service, for the public listening? Playing devil's advocate, you know, why would I want to do? Yeah, and I didn't mean, I'm not questioning, or I just want to know, to clarify for the public listening.
Sure, I will start, and I'm going to wait for Chief Criddle to let me know that I've missed a critical fact. But I think the short version of that is that the ability to move Station Three, Ladder Twenty-Three into town now is important because, again, we never intended to stay at a fire station in another jurisdiction. And so that immediately improves our response to a significant portion of our community and also helps to secure our ability to meet our responsibilities related to the county contract, particularly in the RTP area. The, the other piece, Station Two moving, is that, you know, we know we're within a window of when that station will basically have fulfilled its useful life, given today's circumstances. And so that will be a discussion about, again, further improving fire service response by having that station more geographically appropriately located to balance response among those three districts. You may recall seeing a heat map from Chief Criddle a couple of presentations ago that shows, you know, where we are now and how those, that three-station model really helps to create critical differences in response times in the town's area of responsibility. Does that address your question, sir?
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Assistant Town Manager Zudema, for the additions to the presentation. I can see that a lot of hard work has gone into it. I just would like to be clear, though, most of what you've added to this presentation relates to fire station construction. And that is, in fact, a completely separate issue from what we're voting on tonight, which is whether to go under contract for fire station design. Because we're not, in fact, committing to having Edifice build the fire stations. Is that correct? I mean, we're, we're literally just contracting for the design work.
That is correct.
Okay, so, so this, I mean, I appreciate the additional information on where and why to build the new fire stations, but it doesn't actually affect the, the decision tonight.
That is correct.
Okay, so the only other question that I have is, how much will Chief Criddle be able to be involved in the design of the new fire station? How much input will they get from him? I understand that they'll work with, you know, with other staff, but how much direct input will Chief Criddle be able to have into the design of the fire station?
He has already, he and Chief Lozinski and even some of their other staff have already been directly involved. And he will continue to be directly involved with ensuring that this fire station meets the needs of the Morrisville Fire Rescue Department going forward. He will be intimately involved in that process.
Okay, great. That makes me feel very good about the entire project. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about the useful life of a fire station in general. So I do appreciate better detail around Fire Station Two and the current conditions. And I believe there's 10 more years of useful life expected when it was planned originally. For Fire Station One, do we know the useful life of that station?
I don't know that we know specifically the useful life of that. We would expect it to be, you know, in all candor, a little better than Station Two because it's a newer facility that has some of those newer technologies that we mentioned that could be impactful at Fire Station Two. So some of that will also depend on, you know, how we continue to staff it and what equipment is going where. But we do anticipate that that should have a 30-year, I would say, minimally, life.
Okay, so where I'm getting at is, Morrisville has grown so rapidly, and our infrastructure is built all around the same time. So the useful life of our infrastructure is going to come up all over town at the same time. We're going to need to remediate infrastructure, like roads and, and other assets, all the same time. If we stagger the construction of the fire stations like Harris Mill and, and the Wake Tech site, that might not be a bad thing, actually, you know. So trying to project out, you know, dips and curves on the cost curve, I, I'm a little more comfortable with this approach, so. And I appreciate the detail. I know we are just approving the design, but it does really kickstart us forward to the construction phase in a very short time within 12 months. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mayor Pretend Johnson with a question?
Yes, please. Brandon, could we, can you put the slide up again about the timeline?
Sure.
This looks like a more aggressive timeline that we talked about in the past. And, and I'm not opposed to that, but from a funding mechanism, I thought that we were going to potentially use the bond referendum for funding of this fire station. So the, the bond question wouldn't be until November of 2021. And yet it looks like construction's going to begin before that. So can you just talk to that a little bit? And of course, I'm looking at it more from a funding standpoint than, than anything else.
Sure, I completely understand. So, you know, this is our recommendation of how this could and would work if we moved sort of as practically as we could forward without any delays. So yes, this would put us starting construction in the fall of next year. So you would do a bond potentially in November. I believe that you could potentially look at fund balance or other cash that you could potentially pay back once the bond was taken. But there's a number of factors that, in all candor, Jeannie and Martha can speak, you know, more specifically to. But comfortable telling you that I don't believe that starting construction in October, if you were to discuss a bond referendum item for fire stations, would be problematic.
Thank you. You, you just reminded, we've, we've done this before where we've kind of fronted the money and then paid ourselves back in essence. So thank you for reminding me of that.
Sure.
And, and to Councilmember Rabadi's point, we are not talking about funding tonight. But because you had this slide up, I thought I would ask the question, so.
I think it's a very fair question.
Yep, yep. And I am, I am comfortable too. And I'm, I'm happy to make a motion whenever we're all comfortable, if we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we've all had a chance. Now we're going to circle back again with follow-up questions. Recognize Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I think we've talked about this before, but I want to circle back and to confirm. Will there be solar panels on this fire station? Or will other, I can't get the word escapes me now, sustainability design be included in the design?
We will definitely consider sustainability. Not ready to promise solar panels because I think that's a part of a bigger discussion as we bring our sustainability coordinator on and work through that process. But we'll absolutely consider sustainability options for the station.
Okay, thank you. I just want to keep that in that conversation.
Absolutely, thank you.
That's a very important point. I've heard that from many fellow council members. Okay, does anyone else have any questions or comments before I entertain a motion? Okay, I understand. Mayor Pretend is interested in making a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-290-0 of the Morrisville Town Council authorizing an agreement with Edifice LLC for the design-build process for a fire station.
I second it.
I recognize Councilmember Rabadi.
I second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Pretend Johnson and a second from Councilmember Rabadi. Please have Town Clerk Smith do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rabadi?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Hawley?
Aye.
The motion to approve Resolution 2020-290-0 passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Assistant Manager Zudema and Chief Criddle and your staffs for all the hard work. We are now at Item 8B. Chris Lawson, our Planning Manager, will facilitate this next item, please. Mr. Lawson.
Good evening, thank you. Your last meeting was the public hearing, and tonight you are scheduled to vote on the item. Draft motion language, I believe, has been provided to you via email by the town clerk, should you choose to make a motion. The applicants are in this meeting and are available for any questions you might have, as well as myself. Rabbi Kotler has requested to briefly address Town Council, and besides that, I have no other updates, and I'm available for question. Thank you.
Okay, if we could hear from Rabbi Kotler first, and then if anyone has any questions for Mr. Kotler or for Mr. Lawson. Mr. Kotler?
Well, I just wanted to thank Chris so much and all of the town staff, because this has been a long time going, well over a year, step by step, they've been there for us, so I appreciate all of the help they did, and I'm looking forward to a favorable resolution, God willing. And the way I see this tonight is, you know, this isn't just about a building or, or another project, we're going to be a community center, we're going to be your neighbors. I love being in a town where, when I go to the park, I see you guys, the other day I was there, and I, I saw a few of your faces, and I look forward to being in the neighborhood, seeing you, and building towards the diversity and the growth of, of the community. So thank you for all of your help and support in this, in this important endeavor.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for attending our meetings and making yourself available. We appreciate it. Okay, now if anyone has any comments or questions, because there's a number of motions, so it'd be nice to take care of those in advance. I'll recognize Councilmember Rao and then Councilmember Robati, please.
Oh, well, thank you. I, I want to thank the staff for working on this, and I want to thank Rabbi Kotler and all of the leaders of the Shabbat, Shabbat to consider Morrisville to be your new home. And we look forward to a long-term partnership. I can't think of a better place for us to begin this partnership than, you know, in one of the most inclusive, engaging, dynamic and small towns in North Carolina. So we look this moving forward, and I want to thank you for wanting to do this in Morrisville. And I think I speak for everyone in Med, you know, it's good to, diverse community of many faith and ethnic backgrounds, which I think is so very needed, particularly at this time in our country's history. Thank you.
Thank you. Now recognize people with questions. Councilmember Robati?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rao covered what I was going to say.
Okay, excellent. Hearing no questions, I would recognize Councilmember Robati for the first motion.
I hereby make a motion, I hereby make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-214-0A, approving an amendment of the land use plan for Zero Morrisville Carpenter Road, located west of the intersection of Morrisville Carpenter Road and Town Hall Drive to Institutional, CPA 000086-2020.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second in chat?
Well, I'll second.
Okay, I recognize Mayor Protem Johnson, who's second in the motion. Town Clerk Smith can please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Hawley?
Aye.
The motion to approve Resolution 2020-214-0A passes unanimously.
Okay, I'll recognize Councilmember Robati once again for the second motion.
As required by General Statute 160A-383, the Town Council finds that the requested zoning map amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and is in the public interest because Policy 1A promotes growth and development that contribute to and build upon the town's overall image as a well-planned, attractive, livable and unique community in the Triangle region, and Policy 2A promotes development that fosters a sense of place by including the character of the built environment, including visually appealing buildings, streetscapes, amenities and public spaces. As a result, the zoning map amendment is consistent with the town of Morrisville's adopted plan. In addition, the requested zoning map amendment is compatible with this existing uses surrounding the subject property and will result in a logical and orderly development pattern. Therefore, the zoning map amendment is reasonable and is in public interest. Thereby, I make, hereby make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-214-0B pertaining to the adoption of a planned consistency reuse statement for a proposed zoning map amendment for Zero Morrisville Carpenter Road, located west of the intersection of Morrisville Carpenter Road and Town Hall Drive, REZ 000085-2020.
I recognize Councilmember Fender.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Robati, a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith, if you could do the honors, please.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Hawley?
Aye.
The motion to approve Resolution 2020-214-0 passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have one motion left for the actual ordinance. I'd recognize someone in chat if they'd like to make that one. Recognize Councilmember Robati again.
Okay. I hereby make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2020-214-0, approving a zoning map amendment for Zero Morrisville Carpenter Road, located west of the intersection of Morrisville Carpenter Road and Town Hall Drive, to the Conditional Residential Transition Zoning District. No, uh... To the industrial zoning, isn't that right?
No, Councilmembers, should be the Conditional Residential Transition.
Oh, okay, I, my apologies then. To the Conditional Residential Transition Zoning District, REZ 000085-2020.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Robati. Do I have a second? I recognize Councilmember Rao, please.
I second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Robati, a second from Councilmember Rao. Town Clerk Smith, if you can please do a roll call vote on the ordinance.
Councilmember Robati?
Welcome to Morrisville, Rabbi. Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Hawley?
Aye.
The motion to approve Ordinance 2020-214-0 passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you again, Rabbi Kotler, for coming, and to staff for making this happen, and for fellow council members for demonstrating our welcoming and inclusive nature. We are now at Item Nine. Just a moment, I have a comment. Okay, we had a guest thanking us for that vote. We're now at Item Nine, New Items. There are three new items tonight, a proposed amendment of the land use plan and zoning map for 1101 Shiloh Glen Drive, a proposed amendment of the land use plan and zoning map for 1001 Airport Boulevard, and a proposed amendment of the zoning map for 151 Key Bridge Drive. Elliot Ward, Planner One, will facilitate the first two items. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My first item, as you mentioned, I'll be presenting this evening, is Item 2020-254-0. It's requesting amend the land use plan and zoning map for 1101 Shiloh Glen Drive. I apologize, moving up the, there we go. Okay, the subject parcel outlined in red here is located northeast of the intersection of Shiloh Glen Drive and El Paso Way. This is the former Sam's Club site. The site is partially in Wake County and partially in Durham County. Main Street Capital Partners and DRA Advisors are requesting that the land use plan be amended from Regional Activity Center to Industrial, and that the zoning map amended from Regional Activity Center District to the Conditional Industrial Management District. The site is adjacent to the RAC zoning district to the South and West, and adjacent to the Durham County Industrial Park zoning district to the North. The request is to accommodate an anticipated life sciences use categorized under research laboratory and UVO. The site is approximately 15.33 acres and identified by Wake County PIN 0747-60-4337 and Durham County PIN 0747-60-44-6119.DW. The current land use is commercial, however, the site has been redeveloped to accommodate lab and office space. The site is located within the town's corporate limits and would not need to be annexed. For this request, the applicant has offered prohibit the uses shown on the screen, which would typically be permitted in the Industrial Management District. The applicant has also offered the following conditions, major flex-based use, if otherwise allowed in IM District shall only be permitted to the extent that all uses accommodated are permitted uses on the property, as well as medium manufacturing shall only be permitted to the extent that manufacturing of life science products, including, but not limited to, vaccines, cell and gene therapies, or other biotechnology products, is deemed to constitute medium manufacturing. All other forms of medium manufacturing shall be prohibited. The applicant provided a trip generation memo based on the TIA conducted in May of 2019 to study the impacts of the previously planned general office space use. The memo indicates that no site access changes would be required, and that anticipated research laboratory use has the potential to generate fewer peak hour trips. This can be found in Attachment Two in the packet. The memo also includes peak hour trip estimates for a sample of other uses that would be permitted on the property if the application is approved. Staff recommends approval of the requested land use plan and amendment and zoning map amendment from Regional Activity Center to Conditional Industrial Management for the following reasons. The zoning map amendment would help facilitate reuse of a significant property in a manner that supports a tax base and creates jobs while placing limited demands on the town's infrastructure. The request is compatible with recommendations in Sections 5.3.9A 1 and 2, 5.3.9C 1 and 2 of the 2009 Land Use Plan. The requested zoning map amendment would allow for development that is compatible with the adjacent Durham County Industrial Park zoning district, and the prohibited uses condition offered from the applicant would eliminate potential noisy or hazardous uses typically permitted in the Industrial Management Zoning District. And with the proposed uses, use exclusions, there would be numerous similarities between the uses permitted in the current RAC zoning district and the proposed Conditional Industrial Management Zoning District. At the September 10th, 2020, PCB meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. Town Council should hold a public hearing on the proposed land use plan and zoning map amendments, after which they may either approve or deny the requests. Action on the request is scheduled for the November 10th meeting, however, council can choose to act following the public hearing on October 27th. And that's all I have for now. The applicant has asked to make a brief presentation, after which we'll be available to answer any questions. So I'll just retain control. Tell me next slide.
Good evening, Mayor Hawley, and council members, can you hear me?
You can.
Okay, excellent. If at any point you need me to speak up, I've become somewhat of, of familiar with the remote presentation software, but also am all too aware of all of the pitfalls, so if there's any issue, please don't hesitate to tell me. So thank you tonight for hearing from us tonight. My name is Toby Coleman. I'm a land use attorney with Smith Anderson, and I have the pleasure of representing the owners tonight of this property, Main Street Advisors, Main Street Capital Advisors, and Capital Partners and DRA Advisors. This is an unusual zoning case in that the development has already happened, you can see it there on the screen. This is really a rezoning, as, as some of you have, have heard from me personally, as well as seen in my emails, this is a rezoning really only seeking to add permitted uses as Elliot outlined. This was, as Elliot mentioned previously, a Sam's Club, and the applicant's Main Street and DRA purchased this last year to redevelop it. The result is what you see here. I, I'm obviously an advocate for DRA and Main Street, but I, I would tell you, even if I wasn't, I think it's an impressive transformation from, you know, what was a big-box Sam's Club store into something that looks like a, a very attractive office building. If you could go to the next slide. I'm going to give a little bit of background here on, on sort of how this came to be. Many of you, most of you on the council recall that we came before you with this project about a little over a year ago, back when we used to be able to meet in person and not wear masks for removal of special use permit. And at that time, we weren't talking about biotechnology or life science uses, and I want to talk a little bit about how this came to be and why we're seeking a rezoning now. The, the rezoning is entirely for, to allow life science and biotechnology uses. Unlike your typical office uses, you need research, these are companies that need research labs, along with offices and sometimes some manufacturing for things like gene therapy and, and some, some other complex stuff that probably some of you on the council have much better appreciation of the ins and outs than maybe a lawyer like me does. But, you know, one of the things, you know, and in direct answer to the question of, you know, why is Main Street doing this now? The simple answer is, is that, is that, you know, Main Street, as sophisticated as they are, and DRA as sophisticated as they are when they came in, they plan to use the building for what was known as creative office space, high ceilings, you know, for tech companies and others. They, you know, the, the, the biotechnology industry is moving so fast that they didn't fully appreciate that this, this is really in the center of a, a major cluster of biotechnology and life science companies. This is something I didn't really know either, I don't know, many of you may have already appreciated it, but I have, this is from the North Carolina Biotechnology Center's website, it's a map showing all of the companies within a 1.5-mile radius. By my count, there's 50 companies within just a, a five-mile radius. But Morrisville, you guys already know this, but, you know, as part of this rezoning, you know, Morrisville's really at the heart of both the region and the state's biotechnology industry. According to, again, to the center, 70% of all life science and biotechnology companies are in the Research Triangle Park region, and Morrisville's at the center of that, as evidenced by, you know, whatever you think of our president, as evidenced by his visit a few weeks ago to, to Morrisville to visit the Fujifilm Diosynth facility. Once Main Street put this property that they developed, redeveloped Sam's Club up for lease, as they started doing the, you know, work on the exterior about eight to 10 months ago, they, they got a broker, they put it up for lease, and when they did, the clamor from biotechnologies became something that they, that just could not be ignored. And as a result, this, the conversation with staff and, and some of you started in the winter, again, before the pandemic, and has resulted in this, this... again, before the pandemic, and has resulted in this request that's now before you. If you go to the next slide, Elliot. So this is a case where the built environment in the area has already started to really incorporate life science and biotechnology uses into the mixed-use environment. This has always been part of a, this is, property is currently zoned RAC, and the idea of RAC is it's going to be, it's going to be a regional activity center that will incorporate, you know, sort of the highest density of mixed uses. And, you know, at the time, when this was developed, you know, 20 years ago, it was a Sam's Club, a Walmart, and some areas to the south that were targeted for a variety of uses. Those have started to be developed, as you can see in this slide. What you'll see is, is that there's a, there's a couple hotel uses, a planned, a planned set of apartments. But one of the interesting things to note is that, and one of the things that really sort of prompted our group to really look at this was just up the street, that number five is the Innovation Two Building. And that was purchased by Pfizer a few months ago for a gene editing, for its new gene editing facility. In other words, the mixed use that is on the ground now, the mix of residential and retail and office already includes in this area a component of life science uses, just as a practical matter, you're seeing that happen. Now, the reason that Pfizer facility didn't need a rezoning, why you haven't heard about it, is because it's just over the line. As Elliot mentioned, this property is partially in Durham County, so that Pfizer facility is actually in Durham County. The... If you could go to the next slide, Elliot. So this is a, this is looking down on the, on the building. You see the parking lot there, and this is looking north, northeast, you know, and the distance there is 540, and you see Durham County sort of to the left of this picture. And what you see is, is an area where, you know, this is what the property already looks like, this is what surrounds it, and it's largely to the north. It's almost all zoned industrial in Durham County. And with the future land use map for industrials, you'll see in a minute, and you may have seen in your packets. This is, this, there's a significant shortage of biotechnology and life science spaces. And again, you know, what that includes, you may be familiar with, you know, if you've been to any of those facilities over in Durham, you know, in downtown Durham or otherwise, it's a mix. It's got offices, but it's also got clean rooms or lab space, places for research, and in some cases, places for, you know, gene editing and other forms of manufacturing that don't really produce any impacts off-site. The demand here is for space in this area is present, both because the industry in this, the industry in general is booming because of what we're experiencing and also just the growth in this industry, and also because companies want to be in Research Triangle and in Morrisville in particular. Morrisville has a number of factors going for it that you guys already know. It has the, you know, biotechnology and life science is a high education, high salary industry with an average annual salary of about $98,000, according to the Biotechnology Center. And, you know, Morrisville is where a lot of people in this industry, working in this industry already live, and it's also a place where you've got a lot of highly educated folks about, according to the town's own stats, you've got about 30% of the town's adult population has a graduate or professional degree. If you could go to the next slide. So that's, I think, so just to give you some more specifics, so what happened was is that, you know, once Main Street realized that this was something that they wanted to do and that there was a demand for biotechnology uses in this, at this property, you know, really, the first stop was to go talk with the planning department, with Michelle and Elliot and town staff. And I've talked, we started talking with you, as some of you, you know, from hearing from me, we started talking with town staff and some folks in town council as early as, I believe, February, if I recall, time sort of bends a little weird in the pandemic. But, you know, the issue was that because of this mix, sort of unique mix of office lab and GMP manufacturing, the question was, is that allowed as a matter of right in the existing RAC zoning? And the determination was, if you need to go above 50% lab space, no, it's not. And, you know, I'll tell, I will do nothing but sing praise for your staff. Michelle and Martha and Elliot have really worked hard to try to figure out, how does this code, which frankly, probably doesn't fully anticipate, you know, these new ways of working, how does this code fit in our modern context and what, you know, how do we need to look at this? They really spent a lot of time and really looked at this. Ultimately, you know, in working hand in hand with, with staff, we have come before you with a proposed conditional IM zoning. What that does is a few things. It allows life science uses, it allows particularly research labs is a thing that's not specifically allowed in RAC zoning that's necessary, while also prohibiting uses that are inconsistent with the adjoining Shiloh Glen development. I won't go through the long list, but we'd be happy to discuss any items that you'd like to. You know, basically, we removed pretty much every industrial use except for light manufacturing and/or, you know, gene editing and sort of vaccine making. And the other thing that this rezoning does as a side effect, it was not the intent, but one of the results is that it removed in RAC, multifamilies allowed by right in IM and in this zoning district, it is not allowed. If you go to the next slide. So this just talks a little bit about the zoning conditions. Again, there's two zoning conditions, as Elliot mentioned. You know, there's a zoning condition that prohibits a number of uses to ensure consistency with the surrounding area, excuse me, there's three zoning conditions. There's, and, you know, those zoning conditions really go to uses. You know, one thing I'll note, I know that there may, you know, to the extent that there's some concern that we're crafting essentially a single-use zoning district for life science only, you know, I'm proud to say, and it was actually very important to my client, that that not be the case. You know, in craft, in preparing this rezoning proposal, we took a look at not just what's needed now, but, you know, what could happen, you know, 30 years from now, as you're discussing with the fire station. And the goal was to allow a mix of uses on the property, including office, retail, and restaurants. Kevin Dean with Kim Lee Horn, who's a traffic engineer, who performed the traffic study that was mentioned by Elliot, I believe is on the call and available, should you have any questions. But anyway, I thank you for your time. Hopefully, I tried to sort of give you a presentation with some history, happy to discuss any aspects of this as is necessary. And I also do want to say, my clients with, with Main Street are listening in, you know, in the interest of, because this is a briefing and not a public hearing, it's going remote, we didn't want to overload by having a whole bunch of people on the team's call, but they are watching. And if there are any questions, I can text them and try to get you an answer. So thank you very much.
Mr. Coleman, we appreciate the presentation. And to remind everyone, we're looking for a public hearing in two weeks and possible action on November 10. We have a couple of comments and a question lined up. So I'll first recognize Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Caramella, please.
Well, first of all, Toby, I want to thank you for a really good presentation, and I couldn't agree with you more that Morrisville is well on its way to being a hub of biotech and life science companies. In addition to Fujifilm in the area, we've, you know, had Synios here, TransEnterix, Liquidia, Heated Biologics, just to name a few. And I think as we lived through this pandemic and future pandemics, we're going to have a need for even more pharmaceutical research, and for it to happen in Morrisville is going to be huge. I think it also goes well with our live, work, and play, which, you know, I think, you know, having the ability to have these employees be there to support our retail, which I think is critically important. The question I have is, would, how, would this be, would this be a site for one major tenant working with economic development and commerce? And do we have any idea if we were to, you know, how many jobs would be created in this? And the reason I say that is just to know from, you know, as we look at road infrastructure improvements, I've spoken with DOT in the past about, you know, if there were more jobs added to this area, it could enable us to get, you know, economic money as part of any economic development deal to increase the funding for the roads or, you know, I mean, so I'm just curious, is it one, only one, or would it be multiple tenants? Or do you have any job numbers? Is it too early?
It is. Councilmember Ralph, thank you for asking that, and I know that's been a question that I've heard from a couple other folks, and I've been, you know, asking my client. I think, you know, the answer is on how many tenants, it sort of depends on who's out there, but, you know, to give you, to give you a sense, this is, you know, in excess of 100,000 square feet, I believe. The Pfizer facility up the street is about 62,000 square feet. So I believe this is probably a one to two-tenant facility. As far as the number of jobs, we're not yet at a point where, you know, that really depends on the users. And so I'm not, I don't, I don't have that number, and I don't want to provide a number that would be, you know, a guesstimate. But I think, you know, I think that they are confident, and we are confident, that it will provide good new jobs. And certainly, I will tell you that, you know, that, you know, from Main Street's perspective, what they've been trying to do is get this done as quickly as possible because, you know, they have been getting inquiries and are getting on lists, basically companies, as I understand it, these companies look at three or four areas around the country, you guys probably understand this better than I do, and basically, they want to know if you have the entitlement. And, you know, if you do, once you do, or once it looks like you're on your way, then you start getting into more solid discussions. They've been sort of, you know, at the front door of a lot of these deals, but because they don't yet have the entitlement, those more specific numbers haven't been, haven't been fully discussed, as I understand it.
Well, as a follow-up to that, I just want to say that I would like us, as we continue down this road, I know there's a public hearing, but if this is approved, I'd like to see communication with our chamber, with our economic development leaders in Wake County, with Governor Cooper, Secretary Copeland. We should be attending NC Bio, which I don't even know is happening, where every life science company in the world, and they need to know. If you're, and I want to thank Main Street Capital, but for any CEO of any pharmaceutical company that happens to go listen to this feed, Morrisville is well positioned for your investment. So please, call the governor, call the Commerce Secretary, and come to Morrisville.
And just, I'll just say that we have, that Main Street and DRA Advisors have been working with JLL, who's very familiar with economic development and all the other aspects of that. So, you know, they are, they are working to pull all those levers, and they are talking with, you know, major companies. I mean, what they're, they are trying to position this facility in the best way possible, you know, both for their benefit and for the towns.
Thank you.
Councilmember Caramella, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Toby, the question for me is, I was part of that initial rezoning, which was done, and I also know the history behind, like, how it went. So can you give us, you know, a rundown? Because initially, it was zoned, you came for a rezoning, and then again, now you're asking a rezoning, right? That's, that was the special use permit that I think you guys asked for.
Yeah, so the, the, thank you for asking that, and certainly happy to provide a summary of that. The special use permit that we requested was actually to, it was an odd situation where we were actually asking to remove the special use permit because the Sam's Club and overall development had some provisions that basically regulated the look and the signage of that building in such a way that if they didn't get some of those restrictions removed, it was not clear whether you could use it for something other than retail, and it was not clear that they could transform the exterior like they did. And so, and that was because, basically, when you have a special use permit, it, you know, beyond simple zoning conditions, it creates a series of, it had a series of conditions, I think 20 or 30 long, that were incorporated into the chain of title. And so basically, all we were, what we were asking for at that time was, we'll keep the zoning, we'll keep the RAC zoning, we just want to remove the restrictions so we can turn this Sam's Club, you know, this blue and white Sam's Club into the office building that you see now. So that was that. I think, you know, frankly, I'm sure you know, can appreciate, you know, Main Street, you know, I think they like me, but I don't think that they, you know, I don't think their first call was to me necessarily, that, you know, they weren't super eager to go through another process like this. Their hope was, when they called me back at the start of the year about biotechnology was, is, you know, hey, we can do this on this site, right? And so, you know, the reason that we are back now for a rezoning is because of this biotechnology use. I hope that answers your question. If I didn't, please let me know.
Yeah, yeah, it does. So the reason I was asking that is, I have a very good memory, and I think the presentation at the time that was, that really caught my attention was this, you know, box, which will be transformed, will create close to 2,000 jobs, was what was told at that time. So by changing this to industrial zoning, that's, how much does it significantly change? Because you're, the way you're looking now is different than an office space. So that is my concern, because I remember after the Sam's Club closed, there was a request, and I would ask staff to look into it, but I know there was a request where the Walmart, I think, wanted to have a story, like, wanted to have like Amazon box there, you know, like a redistribution, and I think they were rejected because the zoning was not correct. So now we are going back, now, after taking the special use permit, and then again, going back and putting into industrial. It's, it's a good product, I'm not denying it, but, you know, I just wanted to set the expectation to my colleagues that it was, like, my biggest attraction was the 2,000 jobs that would have come in, and if you guys can give us more insight in the next, like, how many jobs this will get with two clients or something, that would be very helpful to me.
Thank you, that's, I appreciate that, and I'll certainly continue to work on that. I will note, and, you know, just, just, you know, one thing I didn't specifically say is that, you know, the average salary for biotechnology, life sciences, is not, about $98,000 a year. That's per the North Carolina Biotechnology Center. That's about twice what the average salary is in other private sector jobs. So even if you had a reduction, you might have more high-paying jobs. Again, I'll try to get the numbers on the, some estimate on the jobs, but if you want to point that out.
Yeah, totally get it. I'm on life science, so I do understand the job market. But coming to Steve, the traffic study was done at the time, and they said it would support whatever the use that they were doing. I think IM, but the only concern I have is IM, will it reduce, will, what about the traffic of the trucks, you know, like, and will it use the same path or will it use a different path? That's, you don't have to answer, but something next time. All right, that's all from me, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Yes, thank you. I have, I'm glad to see you coming up before the council again, because one of the concerns that I've had with the pandemic is the, the amount of office space that we have currently in the couple of projects that we had going on, this one, and then the Stitch that we're going to be talking about later. And, you know, my concern with the pandemic was that a lot of this office space we were building and redeveloping was going to end up just not being as much of in demand with so many people working from home and likely continuing to do that in the foreseeable future. So I'm glad to see Main Street making the pivot to incorporate other uses in this, for this particular development. So I think it's the right thing to do to include the lab space. The concern I have in the question that goes with that is with the medium manufacturing. Why do you need the medium manufacturing? Can what could be done be accomplished with the light manufacturing? And I'm just curious as to, you know, I don't know if our staff has a definition of what quantifies medium. of what quantifies medium manufacturing versus light manufacturing. But I'm just wondering, what does that look like? Is that going to be like another diocent there? Or, you know, I'm just concerned about what the impact of having medium manufacturing right there will be.
So happy to step aside as, as staff may want. I will tell you that there are definitions of, of light manufacturing and medium manufacturing. Light manufacturing, basically according to your code, is manufacturing that does not create any noise, odor, smoke, et cetera, outside of the building. We reasonably believe that that will be the case for vaccine making and other things like that. The only reason that we even included, so to your question on medium manufacturing, medium manufacturing basically is, you know, there may be some, some side effects, but they don't have a, an overly negative impact. We do not think that gene therapy or vaccines or anything that would be associated with life sciences or biotechnology that we're proposing would be medium manufacturing. Out of an abundance of caution, you know, you can blame me, but, you know, client obviously also, sort of as we started thinking through it and talking with staff, we proposed that zoning condition mainly just to say, look, what we're trying to do here is, is allow for, you know, research associated gene manufacturing, vaccine manufacturing, to the extent that that, that those uses and only those uses are defined as medium manufacturing, they're allowed. But nothing else is, nothing else is allowed. The, the, the point there was it's not 100% clear where this falls. We don't, we think it falls in light manufacturing. We know of no reason why it would not be. It's, you know, again, the, the code defines, you know, the examples are, you know, manufacturing of artificial limbs, dentures, hearing aids, surgical instruments, cosmetics, things like that. And we think that's where this lands. But it's not 100% clear in the code. And frankly, I expect that that may be something that as you guys move forward will be sort of cleaned up, you know, and trying to figure out how to, how to regulate this going forward. But that was the thought process in that proposal. I hope that answers your question. And again, if it doesn't, happy to expand further.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
I'll recognize Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Robati, for her patience. I have a couple of questions related to the, the medium industrial management category. The trip count that you showed us was based in 2019, which as we know is not this year. And it's probably more appropriate because there was actually trip counts. Were those just trip counts for like office use? Or was there any sort of industrial trips considered in that?
So Kevin Dean with Kimley Horn did that review. And I believe Kevin is on the line. Kevin, would you mind handling that?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone, Kevin Dean with Kimley Horn. So what we've done in these calculations is use the ITE land use code, which is called Research and Development Center. So general office, which is how we ran the original TIA, is one land use category. Research and Development Center as a category starts to identify, as Toby and staff have mentioned previously, parts of the building being used for research, lab space, clean rooms, that type of stuff. And it also does account for some, actually in the definition, it does account for some fabrication areas. So the, the land use itself accounts for some of those type uses within the site. But that use as a standalone was just based on its own code in the, in the Trip Generation Manual.
Okay, so let me be a little more clear, I guess.
Okay, sorry.
So when you have industrial management, you are going to receive a, a number of supplies on a regular basis. And you're probably going to have exporting of product on a fairly regular basis. So this trip count generation was just only for probably employee vehicles?
No, sorry. So I understand your question, apologies. This use, this trip generation accounts for all activities associated with Research and Development Center and those that would include fabrication areas. So it's my expectation that it would account for both employees as well as other services needed for the site. So I believe that it would account for the trips generated by the product in total.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. So that's my question on transportation. I do have a question, and I'm not sure if this is a staff question or if this is an applicant question. But because this would be considered a medium industrial facility, does that mean that the hours of operation could be 24/7?
This is Toby Coleman. I, I don't believe there, there is a restriction on hours of operation within the code. But I would, I would ask staff to let me know if I'm wrong.
Hi, Councilmember, yes, we, as far as we, we understand the other, this is not, the, the uses were, were, the conditions were set in place to, to, to provide for a more traditional office lab space with the understanding, obviously being traditional, you know, eight to five kind of, kind of office setting. So not the intention of, of a 24 hour, yeah, just, just for clarification, that's kind of where, what Toby was getting at with the medium manufacturing. It was put in place with limited, with limited uses strictly be just in case. But think of it more as, you know, all the limited uses placed under that condition and just a conditional industrial management with, with noisy and hazardous uses eliminated. So to that extent, you know, the overnight trucks and so forth were, were not anticipated.
Great, I do appreciate that. So one of my considerations is, you know, this is a great use for this space. It's very complementary to the area. We have a highly educated workforce that would be available to, you know, future tenants. The concern I have right now is making sure that there wouldn't be undue noise during the hours that we have our noise ordinance between, I believe it's 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So if the facility was doing 24/7, which it could do, as we know, vaccines are kind of popular right now, we would just ask that something be, you know, put in there about noise consideration during those quiet hours.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scruggins-Johnson. Happy to, I guess, I may want to follow up with you on that. And I'll obviously follow up with Elliot on that. I guess one of the things I, I will be asking and trying to figure out is, is whether your noise ordinance or his party provides some of those protections. I don't know if it does or not, you may know better than I do.
Our noise ordinance does provide those protections between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. It's just, you know, I want to make sure that that's pretty clear, that that's applicable.
Okay, I guess, you know, what I can do is work with staff to get an answer for you on whether the noise ordinance applies. And then I can report back, I will report back both to council and to you directly about what, what staff is telling me, and I'm sure staff will do the same.
Very much appreciated, you know, the work is very important. But this is in a mixed area, mixed use area. And we want to make sure that it's a, you know, everybody's a good neighbor, right? So, so thank you very much, those are all my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Robati, please.
Thank you. Hi Toby, are, is the type of gene therapy that you anticipate being done on these sites, is that the type, is that controversial in any way or likely to draw protesters? Or anything else that might pose a safety issue of which we're not aware currently?
No, so the, well, what I'll tell you is, is I don't think so. The context that I'm thinking of, and I may not be thinking of all the contexts. I was asked, and I actually had to learn a new word for this. I was basically asked if there would be animal research on the facility. And currently there is no plan for, for any, any sort of animal research. I don't know, again, there may be other sorts of controversies that you may be thinking of. I'm not aware of any, and, and, but certainly would be happy to try to address any questions or concerns you may have.
Yeah, stem cell therapy tends to be controversial. Or I just want, you know, I just want to, you know, I just want to be able to, to give our police chief a heads up if, if there's something of that type that's going to be on site and see what she thinks.
Right, we're, we're, yeah, I'm not aware of any.
Thank you.
Mayor Perkem Johnson, please.
Thank you. Toby, I, I have more of a comment than, I don't have an actual question. But you started out your presentation by talking about this being an impressive transformational project. And I have to agree 100%. You shared that, that visual with us of the building prior to the meeting. And I, I shared it with some folks and, and asked, where do you think this is? And not one person could identify it as the former Sam's Building. So I would have to agree, impressive transformation is, is the right, the right phrase. But having said that, I know this is a rezoning, this is not the site plan. So we're, we're just talking about a rezoning at this point. And I think this is probably important to, to note at this point that there are many opportunities across town for reuse and adaptive reuse of facilities. So I'm really pleased to see a good project like this coming through that, that, that shows how viable and desirable the place it is here in Mooresville to do business. And Councilmember Rao was really summed that up better than I'm doing. But, you know, the, the Mooresville is in the center of the triangle and in the center of the universe as, as it relates to biotech and life sciences. So, so I think, I, I, I see this as a very positive project.
Thank you, we've all had a chance to comment and ask for our questions. Now we'll do one last final round for anyone who has anything before we move on to our next agenda item. I'll recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
Yes, I'm sorry, I just had one more thing. I just wanted to mention that the number of small businesses right along that, that Walmart shopping center, there's a, there are two rows of small businesses there that I think would also benefit from this project. One of the, one of the small businesses is owned, as a matter of fact, by one of my Breckenridge neighbors. And I'm, I'm sure that they would welcome people, having people to come into their restaurant from so close with so many jobs. So I think that it would, you know, I think that it would be more people in towns. You know, I just think that it would be a good project for that reason also.
Yeah, I believe we're all looking forward to that building being put into good use again. Councilmember Fender, please.
Yes, I have another question that was spawned by Councilmember Scruggins-Johnson, a question about the transportation. If, I'm wondering if the Trip Generation Report should be done in the context of medium manufacturing rather than an R and D center? And whether that would be more indicative of, like, a worst case scenario?
I will let Kevin speak to that. I, I will say that as far as medium manufacturing goes, you know, for the, you know, to, to frankly address your, I, I think, you know, your practical concern of, you know, what if things go sideways? What's the worst case scenario? Medium manufacturing is limited only to biotechnology. So, you know, it wouldn't have its traditional, you know, traditional aspects, more traditional aspects. But, but again, the traffic, I'll let Kevin speak to.
I mean, you're still going to have trucks going in and out regardless of whether it's vaccines or diapers.
That's absolutely right. And actually, as far as diapers go, I, I do want to note just one thing. This used to be a Sam's Club. So, you know, frankly, you know, almost whatever goes in there is probably going to have fewer trucks than, than the, you know, the, the fleet of trucks that was coming in to supply the Sam's Club before it closed. But with that, I am certainly not the traffic expert, I'll hand it over to Kevin.
Thanks. So one of the, one of the uses we actually considered on page three of the Trip Generation Memo was manufacturing. So Land Use Code 140 is manufacturing, that actually generates fewer trips than general office or Research and Development Center would. And so we, we did the review for the exact same reason that you're mentioning, confirming that if it did shift towards one of these other combinations, what would that look like? And it is still fewer trips. So great question.
Thank you. And Toby had a good point about it being a Sam's Club previously.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you all for coming. And we appreciate this presentation. Once again, to review, we're looking for a public hearing on the 27th, possible action on November 10th. Mr. Ward, do you have anything else on this item to wrap us up?
That's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Ward, I believe you have the next item as well, so I'll pass it right back to you.
All right, thank you, Aaron, catch us back up. All right, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Aaron. All right, so for my second presentation, this is for item 2020-258-0. Request to amend the land use plan and zoning map amendment for 1001 Airport Boulevard. The subject parcel, again in red, here is located along the north side of Airport Boulevard and east of the intersection of Slater Road and Copley Parkway. This is the former Outlet Mall site, which is now being referred to as the Stitch. The applicant Ecuador, Equator Capital Management is requesting that the land use plan be amended from Regional Activity Center to Business Activity Center and the zoning map amended from Regional Activity Center District to the Conditional Business Activity Center District. The site is adjacent to the RAC zoning district on all sides. And like the previous presentation, this request is also to accommodate, anticipate a life science use categorized under Research Laboratory in the UDO. The site is approximately 24.6 acres and identified by Wake County PIN 0747-38-2750. The current land use for the site is general commercial. However, the existing building is currently under construction to be converted to the office and lab space. The site is located within the town's corporate limits and would not need to be annexed. The applicant has offered the condition that forestry, utility facility major and central utility plant uses would not be permitted at this site. The applicant provided a Trip Generation Memo based on the TIA conducted for the previously approved site plan, which can be found in attachment two in the packet. Again, the memo indicates that the anticipated Research Laboratory use, again, has the potential to generate fewer peak hour trips as compared to the current commercial use. The memo also includes peak hour trip estimates for a sample of other uses that would be permitted on the property if the application was approved. Again, at the September 10th PCB meeting, planning and zoning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of both requests. Staff recommends approval of the requested land use plan amendment and zoning map amendment from Regional Activity Center to Conditional Business Activity Center for the following reasons. The requested zoning map amendment will allow for uses that are compatible with uses in the surrounding area, including the anticipated research laboratory and office uses. The zoning map amendment would help facilitate reuse of a significant property in a manner that supports the tax base and creates jobs while placing limited demands on the town's infrastructure. And the requested land use does- And the requested land use designation of Business Activity Center would be consistent with the proposed draft land use plan, which is currently in review should that draft be approved. Town council again should hold a public hearing on the proposed land use plan and zoning map amendments, after which they may approve or deny the requests. Action like the previous item was scheduled for November 10th. Can council can act after the 27th public hearing. This applicant is also asked to make a brief presentation. And similar to last time, I'll just run through and and move the next slides for them. So Richard, if you want.
Thank you, Elliot. Mayor Colley, council members, hope you can hear me okay?
We can, if you could just identify yourself, Mr. Brown.
Hey, excellent. I am Richard Brown, land planner and landscape architect with Kimble Horn and Associates, 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight and appreciate your hearing this case. With me tonight, it's really a pleasure to represent the project as well for Equator Capital Management. And with me tonight is Dylan Elkind of Equator Capital, along with Kevin Dean, traffic engineer with Kimble Horn. You may have heard of him before, maybe even in the last few minutes. But they're with me tonight. And as as we just offer some brief, you know, comments to add to Elliot's report, we'll try to be brief in that and just be here to answer hopefully any questions that you have between the three of us. I think similar to the case before us, it's it's apparent that Morrisville's the the bullseye hotspot and well positioned for high level life sciences uses like this. And as Elliot mentioned, we are, the application seeks to take this site, which has, you know, for years and years been an an old outlet mall that's that remained vacant for for years before Equator purchased the property. And they are in the process, as Elliot noted, of making a significant investment in re renovating the building inside and out. I think to the to the betterment of the of the entire property. The site plan that's on your screen right now, just kind of given overview of the property, if most of you are probably familiar with. But the existing, you know, 250,000 square foot building that has been on the site is the subject of the of the renovation and the really the redevelopment of the site with interior and exterior amenities, loading and service areas to meet the town's requirement. The site has been through all the site plan approvals, obviously in the permitting, and is in the process now of, on the tail end of the completion of the site redevelopment and site improvements and the shelling of the the existing building, along with substantial exterior improvements that really contribute to a a great transformation of this property. So what happens, I guess, next on the inside is really the the subject and the impetus of this rezoning request to take it from the Regional Activity Center, which, you know, in its highest use was all retail. So all of the trips and parking and site regulations that went along with it, you know, will in many ways, as you heard with the previous case, be reduced in some ways with with an office and or life sciences type use or use within that that category. Business Activity Center would allow for that use with, as Elliot mentioned, some conditions for to condition some uses that are, you know, more in line with a, you know, perhaps a manufacturing or utility use. We've conditioned those out of that land use category. So we feel like our application is appropriate for the prop for the property. Feel like it advances the town's vision and in their growth plan within the the draft land use plan that's currently in process. And we also feel that it's very compatible, perhaps more so with the character of the surrounding land uses. So in in support of those goals, as I mentioned, Equator is in the middle of make, you know, on the tail end of of a major investment in this property to really create that opportunity for the modern office experience and for to attract high level and high paying jobs to this to this area that's uniquely positioned, you know, at the one really one of the gateways of town of Morrisville, two major corridor, intersection corridors with. So so really uniquely situated in that way for this investment. And so we 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 really feel like this this zoning proposal will allow for really the 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 best use of the property as well as really a key identity landmark at the gateway to the town. We feel like this, we agree with staff and actually appreciate working with Michelle Elliott and your your planning staff, just been very helpful along the way through the process, very responsive, very, you know, helpful in wading through some of the technicalities of what our proposal was showing. And also appreciate their recommendation for approval along with, as he mentioned, planning and zoning boards unanimous recommendation as well. So we, I think a couple of just things I would, you know, leave us with and then maybe maybe just give you a some images that give you a character of the site. It's first of all, just we we agree and underscore a couple of facts that consistency with the comprehensive plan and the land use plan. The specific goals are goal number one there within this study area to establish a strong, clear, positive and distinct community image, building on Morrisville's unique character and history and desirable regional location. We've built, we feel like our proposal does exactly that. And then goal number four is also to promote innovative and healthy commercial office and industrial areas that serve the needs of residents, provide employment and strengthens Morrisville's tax base and captures a lot a large regional market. So so we feel like we squarely achieve those those consistencies with the plan. And as Elliot's got on the screen right now, just kind of some representation and illustrations through CBRE, who's brokering the property along with Equator. These are some of the improvements that are happening to the with the site. The large parking expanses have been toned down with plenty of landscaping and updated to the current UDO standards. So and then elevation, I think a renovation is to say the least, you know, really with this property and how how even the current development that's going on right now and finishing up right now is improving the property. Elliot, I'll kind of scurry through a few of the others if you if you'll advance. Just another example of some key sort of architectural features at the main entry level. This is kind of at that, what what's called the Stitch is kind of that central amenity to the building and will and will contain all of the sort of interior common common areas and amenities for the interior. In the in the foreground, you're seeing improvements, you know, in the form of of landscape amenities and outdoor program areas. Okay, next slide. It's an idea really of the overall look of of the property from sort of a a zoomed out view and just kind of underscores some of the redesign and strengthens the access and kind of gives gives an experience from really the parking area all the way through the outdoor amenity space in the in that on that Slater roadside or in Copley Parkway, you know, into into the building. Do you have the next slide there? All right, a couple of examples of what those outdoor amenity spaces look like as they approach the building, just outdoor meeting meeting spaces and leisure spaces on that side that I was speaking of. Okay, next slide. And then on the the creek side, if you will, or the I 40 facing side, really coming out of the building, opening up into more of a inactive amenity program with things like outdoor, you know, seating tables, community gathering tables and bocce courts and yoga lawns, those types of facilities and even some some, you know, get outdoor gathering space for small amphitheater type seating. And obviously, a some significant landscape improvements that go along with that. Just to give you a care, an idea of the character that the the client has invested in. Couple more slides. This is just a couple of examples back to back of the interior common areas, just the high base ceilings, the well lit spaces that that were that were would would really contribute to Class A and and life sciences uses. Here's another view from that 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 ax that cross axis through between the that really would would separate the potentially two tenant spaces. This would, you know, in a in an ideal world, be a single tenant, a Class A user. But it's set up fairly well to be one or two spaces. And these would be the common amenity areas that separate that. Next slide. Okay, just another view of that that I won't belabor. Go ahead to the next slide. I think as you probably know better than anybody, the 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 lab and life sciences users that are within proximity to the site, there's over a dozen, nearly 20, within just a few mile radius, you know, of the of the property itself. So really contributes and strengthens the the existing pattern of of development by or or influx of life sciences and bio gen type users that are that are really looking at Morrisville as the the key market in the triangle. Okay, next slide. All right, well, again, just ending on this this rendering here. And and I think the only thing I would add is we kind of toss it back to your to any questions that you may have or comments that we can address. The similar, you know, in nature to this this use that we're contemplating versus the uses allowed under the RAC zoning. We feel like consistent with what's been, you know, stated from a T I from a traffic standpoint. And Kevin's kind of walked through, we are going from really a higher trip generation potential down to a lesser of a a peak trip situation. And those many of the same rationale that feed what what Kevin has done in our traffic model really applied to this site as well. We will leave it there. And again, just state appreciation for the time and appreciate staff and planning board and council's attention to this tonight. And again, Dylan with Equator Capital, Kevin and myself are available here and happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. You shared it. Getting some echo there. First, I'll recognize Councilmember Rao.
Thank you, Mayor. Rich Richard, thank you for that great. Sorry, I'm hearing an echo on my end.
Richard, maybe you can silence mute yourself until you respond.
Okay, let's hope it's not on my end. I want to thank Dylan and and Mayhul Patel, the CEO of Equator Capital. I mean, it just seems like yesterday when I met them and all of you, and we had this exciting opportunity. And I've always envisioned this mall being a much needed redevelopment of this side of Morrisville. So I my first, I have two questions. And and the first question has to be with just getting an understanding of the initial vision of this, from my understanding, was to be sort of a multi tenant, maybe a few tenants and more of an innovation kind of open space office environment. So has what's changed been that it's you're looking now at one tenant? Is that correct to assume that there's? I just want to get a sense of what's changed. And then my follow up question, which you might be able to answer. The even, you know, as as we get this site done, moving this to this rezoning, do you envision, and maybe Dylan can answer this, a hotel? And I've heard retail restaurants, because I've always envisioned this, even talking with Mr. Patel back in the early days, of of having like a a hotel and then, you know, restaurants and shops, which would really promote, you know, once again, better support of our retail and restaurants. And, you know, see whichever pharmaceutical company or life science, which I said earlier, is a perfect timing, given the amount of momentum we're seeing in Morrisville. So and then the final thing is I just want to thank all of you and the staff for all of the hard diligence and and commitment that are making a very, very significant investment to purchase this mall and finally get something done. I cannot thank you enough. I mean, it's it's been years and years since we've talked about this. Now I just have to pinch myself when I see these renderings. I can't believe it. So but anyway, thank you. And I just wanted to see if you could take a stab at two of those questions.
Sure.
Any other uses that you envision down the road?
Absolutely. And well, thank you, Councilman Rao, for your sentiment. And thank you, Mayor Colley and the rest of the council for your time and consideration of our proposal. And thank you, Richard, for doing a good job running through that and Elliot and Michelle as well. For the tenant question, I'm going to try to remember everything you asked first. So for the tenant question, initially, we did see it as a more of a collaborative, multi-tenanted facility. I think, you know, with the nature of pandemic and COVID changing the office experience, some collaboration might be less likely on the near term horizon. And also with, you know, just the this being kind of a Class A major facility, we are hoping to I'm sorry, I'm seeing some problems with the Wi Fi. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, sir, we can hear you fine. Thank you, Dylan.
So with this become like a Class A facility in in its location with and a major life sciences users in the area, we are hoping to land a large, you know, multinational company here, which might take, you know, a large block of space. And I think that's all Richard was referring to when he said it might be a single tenant or, you know, multi-tenant. But we don't have any specific, you know, tenants planned for the building just yet. And, you know, our options are open there. The next question, I guess, regarding future development in restaurants, hotels, et cetera. We don't have any current plans. I mean, our goal for this project has always been and continues to be activating what we believe is one of the one of the prime locations in the triangle, both within Morrisville itself and would be, you know, with its proximity to the airport. And and that's kind of actually why we named it the Stitch after gaming out a lot of different names is not only is the building kind of shaped like a stitch, but we'd also, we wanted to, you know, pay lip service to Morrisville being the center of the actual triangle and this being kind of the the stitch that, you know, kind of merges that whole that whole area together. We do, our plan is to just activate the site. And we think now a life sciences use might be our best bet moving forward to activate this site. That said, we do, you know, we do not have any specific concrete plans on any future development at this time. But after, you know, getting through what's, you know, this project as it's in in front of us, we do want to be, we believe in this as a long term project. We believe in Morrisville as a long term, you know, place to do business. And I guess we'll we'll see is the best answer I can give you. But yeah, that's and I I think that was all the questions you had for me, right?
Well, I guess, yeah. And if if I'm not clear, I'll have to move to another room. Well, I guess, yeah, and if, if I'm not clear, I'll have to move to another room. I'm sorry, it's Wi-Fi issues, but, um, I, I guess, yeah, the, the final thing I'll say is I just wanted to know. If you were to consider future development, which it sounds like you are, those uses hotel and retail and restaurants would still be, would be permitted under this. And maybe the staff can answer that. I just want to make sure as we look at all the plan and anyone listening, I just want to make sure whatever decisions we make. Play into the long-term, um, land use plan efforts that are underway right now. So that's really all I need to know before I make a decision.
Uh, absolutely, and, and Michelle and Elliot, please correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the only use we're taking off the table from going to BAC to RAC. I'm sorry, going from RAC to BAC zoning, um, besides the restrictions that we placed on the property was losing, uh, big box retail. Which was not ever, you know, nothing we'd contemplate, um, going forward, so. Yeah, the future potential there is, is still there.
All right. Thank you, Dylan, for the job.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you can hear me okay, just to, just to underscore from a technical side and, uh. Welcome staff to, to elaborate further, but no, nothing, nothing that this zoning district, uh, if approved. Uh, would preclude the, the, the future development potential of the site for those uses that you described, Steve.
Okay, that's all I need to hear. It's quite exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan and Richard for those answers. I'll recognize Councilmember Fender and then I have a question and then Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is in regards to the rezoning from Regional Activity Center to Business Activity Center. I understand the desire to do that, to allow for, um, the research of lab space. Um, and I also noticed in the presentation that, um. Your application would limit the use of, I think there were three items, a central utility plant, forestry and. One other thing, but. My question goes to with rezoning to Business Activity Center, you're then allowed. Uh, multifamily housing, which I, I believe would be a concern for this area for two reasons. Just the additional apartments, um, for our town and our infrastructure lagging behind. And then the second with, um. The airport overlay and, um, and RDU's concern. So why, why continue to allow the, uh, multifamily residential? Or would you be willing to put a condition on that as well?
Okay, well, thank you, Council, Councilwoman Fender for your question. And I was hoping someone was going to bring up this question because I had to bite my tongue while the, uh, the airport authority letters were being read earlier in the night. So I do thank you for that. So I, their letters, especially the, the first letter was, uh, in my opinion, a little bit misrepresent, misrepresent, uh, or very misrepresent. Uh, misrepresenting what, what we're doing here and what we can and can't do, uh, currently and, and in the future. The only difference between RAC and BAC in terms of residential uses as defined, and I actually just brought it up to make sure I'm correct, as defined in the Morrisville's, uh, permitted use is. Uh, fa, a family care center. So both in RAC and BAC are reallowed, um, multifamily units, uh, below fifty, uh, below fifty units as of right, above fifty units. With a, uh, major land you, or major site plan approval from the town. Uh, everything else, uh, across the board through RAC and BAC are this, are the same besides the family care home, which is, you know, an adult, uh, care facility. That said, so our rezoning efforts kind of have, uh, do not take us any step closer to developing multifamily on the site. Um, and, you know, we, if the airport overlay was not in place, we would have the ability from a zoning perspective to do it right now. And if the airport, you know, if after the rezoning with the airport overlay, uh, in place, we, it would, does not change our ability to do this rezoning. Or to, to do any multifamily development. That said, uh, so, I mean, our position on this is that it's not applicable to what we're trying to accomplish here. And so we do not want to, you know, we don't want to address, we, we, we don't feel like we should have to address the condition that we can't build anyway because of the airport overlay. Our hesitance to, our hesitance to put that on the property is, you know, what we have here is, you know, twenty-four point six acres. And what we believe is a well-located site, you know, with respect. What we don't have is, you know, crystal ball, we don't know what the, the future is going to bring. Uh, we think that, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the line from now, whatever, if any conditions pop up, that would. In, you know, that would, uh, encourage the town of Morrisville to remove the airport overlay. Uh, maybe, you know, for instance, planes are electric or something like that, would be the same conditions that would make us maybe. View this as a potential multifamily site down the line. And so we would want to defer to the, you know, the. The discretion of the town of Morrisville's planning and zoning, uh, town council with the, um. Airport overlay prohibiting it, uh, as the main governing factor of whether or not we can build multifamily on the site. Uh, we think that, you know, kind of aligns our interest and, um, that's really our position on it. I do think it's worth mentioning further for me because I've had conversations directly with the airport authority here. And they know that with our rezoning effort that they cannot, or that we, after this rezoning, we still can't build multifamily. And I'll just be frank because that's kind of how, uh, I speak and. I don't want to waste anybody else's time, but what, uh, what I believe from my conversations that they're trying to accomplish here is to. Encourage the town to force us to put a residential restriction on the property. Because they are upset that near McCrinnan Parkway, the town is, you know, the future land use, uh, recommendation is removing the. Airport overlay, which I guess will then allow for residential development down there. Now several cases around the country right now that the airport, uh, air, local airport authorities are being sued by, uh, local residents due to noise complaints. What they're trying to accomplish here is to put something on the record to shift. To shift blame or shift, um, liability from themselves onto the town. Because, you know, if you, if you guys make us put this restriction on the property, you're acknowledging that, you know, that it's too noisy or it's not safe to build residential development here. And because the airport overlay is being removed in the, um, by McCrinnan Parkway. They'll have something that they can point to to say, see, you know, they knew, uh, this was not a good idea. It's right next to the property, they put a restriction on here and it was inconsistent with what they're doing there. So I had a, I had a long conversation with, um. With Bill Sanford or the, uh, the airport authority and I believe because the, and from afterwards, that's what I believe is they're purely their intent from trying to get us and coming so strongly. Against our, our, our rezoning effort, um, is only to protect themselves and reliability. And, uh, so I think, you know, from that and from the potential, you know, ten years down the line, uh, electric planes and, you know, making it up. But at, at different conditions down this line that we can't future, we believe that putting the residential restriction on the property is a, a lose for us and it's a lose for the town of Morrisville because of the liability issue. And so, and we don't believe it's applicable because. Because of the airport overlay. So that was a long way of answering your question.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to go next and then Councilmember Rabadi, I believe. So if we could hear from staff, um, to confirm what was stated by Dylan about. Restrictions given current airport overlay. And what's being proposed in our draft land use plan. I'd love to hear confirmation of what he said that pretty much they can't do much of anything anyway.
And Ellen, if you don't mind, I'll take that one.
Okay.
Um, yes, currently residential is not allowed on the property because the airport overlay district, the airport overlay district. Restricts any residential use of the site. Um, with our land use plan update, we are not proposing to amend the overlay in this area. So if the, we move forward with zoning as is shown in that draft plan, residential would continue to be prohibited.
Including family care center?
Correct.
Okay, that's very helpful. Appreciate that. Generally, I am agnostic about what use. It's a very attractive site, we're looking to activate, uh, I believe it'd be best for the town, uh, for it to be activated. You've mentioned the amenity site, which would, uh, be actually useful if there was a hotel or retail, but if it's a single tenant. Uh, the amenities wouldn't really be used by other residents. Would that be an accurate statement?
Yeah, we would have to defer, uh, you know, right now, we, we haven't thought through full building access right now. Um, and we'd have to defer to the, the building users, uh, whether, you know, of course, it's. It's extra complicated now in a time of COVID of, you know, with the public coming in, et cetera, down the line, um, you know, that center amenity area. There is the potential for it to be open to the public. There is, you know, a few, few, there's going to be a coffee shop, a state-of-the-art gym. Uh, some other, you know, so Taylor, Doc in the Box type thing, but, um. I can't commit to say either way, we're going to have to defer to the tenants in the building.
I understand that completely, I was just going to put that out there. I, um, used to work on Ariel Center Parkway across the street and used to go over there for lunch. It was a very nice facility, but then it's a little rundown now, uh, now it's going to be, once again, a destination. Um, so I'd love for it to be a destination for our entire town if possible, but if you have one super tenant in life sciences, uh, all the better. So I just wanted to share those thoughts. Thank you very much for clarifying the, um, re, uh, the residential issue for us. I think that was a concern for a number of us. At this point, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rabadi.
Hi, um, I didn't quite follow your answer to Councilmember Fender about. Why you don't want to, um. To put a conditional, uh, conditional pr, restriction on multifamily housing. I, I mean, I understand that, you know, I understand that looking into the future, if, you know, planes become electric and there's no more noise. No more noise problems that. You would be, you know, that you, the restriction would still be in place, but if there were no more noise problems, there'd also be. No objection to you putting multifamily housing there at a time when presumably the infrastructure of roads and schools would have caught up with the development. So I, I'm a little bit concerned about the, about multifamily residential still being an option on that property. As a matter of fact, I'm, I'm very concerned about multifamily residential still being an option on that property. Um, I'd actually like to hear from staff, um, is that what exactly is the, the? I forget what they call it, but the, the noise level, you know, like where if it's sixty-five, you can't, you have to do all kinds of noise mitigation stuff. If it's seventy, you can't do anything. What's the level here on this site?
Okay, so if we look at the two thousand fourteen noise contours, this is still outside of that sixty-five decibel level. Where the FAA says that you don't need to do any noise attenuation. Regardless, both of our airport overlay districts, both are A and B, um, do currently still require noise attenuation. So, um. Residential again is not permitted. In order for residential to ever be allowed on the site, you know, the town council at the time would need to amend the code to permit that. So it couldn't be done without discussion of the elected body.
So there's no, there's no development by right of multifamily with noise mitigation. Under this rezoning.
No, there's not.
Okay, thank you.
Like to recognize Mayor Pretend Johnson, please.
Thank you, so on the, um, project prior to this, I talked about how it was an impressive transformational project. And I just feel compelled to say the same thing here so that I'm not favoring one project over another. I think this is a fabulous, um, again, transforma, transformational project. And, um, I appreciate all the, the work, um, that the applicant is putting into this project. I also, um, during, and now I can't remember who said it, um, I don't know if it was Dylan, uh, but the, the comment was made about. How this project now would have to meet today's standards. And that, that is really significant, so I just wanted to kind of repeat that. This facility as it exists, well, today or because it's under a lot of, um, transforming right now. But, um, as it existed as a, and it, as an outlet mall. It fell under old, very old standards, so, um, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't lost in the conversation. And so, um, then the, the last comment I want to make. And, and I, I do realize that we're in a, a pandemic right now and, and things are different. But so many of us remember this facility when it was a very vibrant outlet mall. And many of us shopped here, um, quite a bit, and as you heard, many of us even ate here, um, at lunchtime. So I would say if there's any way possible, um, as the facility is getting ready to open, to have an open house for those of us. That would love to come and see how this has transformed and the reuse, um, uh, of the facility. And that would be my only request. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your comment and, and sentiment and I would say absolutely, as we are about to open, all of you are invited to come see, uh, come see what we've done there, so.
Well, I meant open for the public too. But I understand, we're in a pandemic, so I'm, I'm asking a lot. One day, one day, many, because this, this has, this facility has been a topic of conversation for many years. And we have, um, there were a few times I was out here for a grand opening of, uh, you know, the, the reuse and, um, and things didn't pan out. So, um, anyhow, great topic of interest here in town, so, um. If it's, if it's ever possible.
Hopefully this will be the last grand opening you have to come to at this facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ralph, please.
Yeah, just one last question, um, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So what you're saying is that currently and staff can enter, and I just got a little confused. So currently, there's no residential permitted in this property because of the o, airport overlay, point number one. Point number two, if we approve the recommended, um, the recommendations to our current land use plan. Um, Director Stiegel, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're saying that there still would be no multifamily approved on this site. Correct or incorrect? Okay.
That is correct.
So, um, if there was no airport overlay, in my opinion, I actually think this would be a perfect place for multifamily. Because if Morrisville wants multifamily, I think you want it in places that are closer where people are working, which is in this place. And where, you know, destination for shops and retail. So I've always envisioned this mall before Equator Capital came in, almost making it like a North Hills West, where there would be sort of like a, an environment, a destination, like Mayor Colley said. But with that being said, I guess what the applicant is saying is that if there's no condition, if they can't have residential now. And if they can't have it, if the plan is, if, if at the time Morrisville drops the land use plan as recommended. They just don't feel a need of, um, putting a restriction in because they just don't have a crystal ball and they're a business with investors and people. So if you put in a deed or restriction, you could be, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. I mean, is, is that really what you're saying then? I mean, what I'm hearing from the applicant is there is no intent to build multifamily residential right now to activate the site. And even if there were a phase two for hotel and restaurant as, is that, is that a fair statement?
That, that is correct. Thank you.
Okay, that's all I need to hear for the record. Thank you.
Councilor Ralph, if I can, if I can add just one point that I think is important as you, as this carries on to a decision. In the next, you know, the next meeting is that we, we really agree with the, the land use code and staff. That really the airport overlay or any overlay district for that matter is intended. land use code and staff that really the airport overlay or any overlay district for that matter is intended to serve as a mechanism for just that, an overlay to restrict or require standards for multiple properties. So it's doing its job there so that 40 properties don't have to add a condition if they ever were to come before you to further restrict that. So our, our stance, in addition to what Dylan has said, in addition to what staff has offered, is it's really redundant, if you think about it, to pose a condition on something that's already restricted through an, through an overlay district. So, so that's our stance, and I think that makes sense.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I concur. We appreciate staff and the applicant bringing forth the information we need to feel comfortable in understanding that rather complicated situation. Okay, so to sum this up, Mr. Ward, let me know if I'm incorrect. We're planning on having a public hearing for this on October 27th, possible action on November 10th. I think we've had some good questions. Looking forward to hearing from the applicant again on the 27th probably, and then being, hopefully being available. Mr. Ward, anything else to close us out on this item?
That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to recommend that we take a 10-minute break before we move to item 9C, which Ms. Langston will be handling for us. So my computer says 8:52, so if we could reconvene at 9:03 as a group, I would appreciate it. So that is the plan, 10-minute break. Be back at 9:03. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to bring us back in. It is 9:03. We are now back in session. I will now recognize Emily Langston to help us through item 9C, our final action item this evening. Ms. Langston.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm presenting item 2020-2510, consideration of items to amend the zoning map for 151 Key Bridge Drive. The subject parcel is shown here outlined in red. The Town of Morrisville Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Department has requested to rezone the parcel at 151 Key Bridge Drive from the Town Center Commercial Zoning District to Park Greenway Open Space Zoning District. The parcel is approximately 1, 3.15 acres of undeveloped land located north of Key Bridge Drive. The 2009 land use plan designates the property for parkland. The actual hints have stated that they intend to use the property as a park, so this item amends only the zoning map, not the land use map. This aerial imagery is from May of this year, showing the surrounding area. You can see the adjacent existing Crabtree Creek Nature Park, Cedarport District Park to the north, and other surrounding developments. The parcel is immediately surrounded by other Park Greenway Open Space zoned property to the north and the east. To the south, there is the high-density residential Arium Weston Apartments and low-density residential Weston Estates. Into the west, there is, I'm sorry, yeah, and to the west, there's the Town Center Commercial zoned area, which is a small commercial center with a daycare and a multi-tenant office space. So this map is the 2007 Town Center Plan from the 2009 Future Land Use Map. You can see the subject parcel designated there in the middle for parkland. If the rezoning application is approved, the applicant, Town of Morrisville Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Department, has stated that they intend to combine this parcel with the adjacent Crabtree Creek Nature Park parcel and further develop the two parcels together into an upgraded park. This is a closer in view of the concept map. You can see the subject parcel to be rezoned is outlined in red. The most recent plan for the park shows various park amenities on this part of the property. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning request for the following reasons. One, the proposed rezoning to Park Greenway Open Space is consistent with the 2009 land use plan designation for this property as parkland. Two, the proposed rezoning to Park Greenway Open Space to facilitate further development of Crabtree Creek Nature Park is consistent with the 2018 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Three, the proposed Park Greenway Open Space zoning district is compatible with surrounding zoning districts. And four, the requested zoning map amendment would allow for development that is compatible with developments in the town center, thereby resulting in a logical and orderly development pattern. The Planning and Zoning Board heard this item and held a public comment session at their September 10th meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval for zoning. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I believe that both Jerry Allen and Kyle Cooper with our Parks and Recreation Department are also here available to answer questions about the park project.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Looking for the chat to see if anyone has any comments or questions at this time. While we're waiting, I just mentioned that, like the other two, we are planning to have a public hearing on the 27th for this item. Tentative action on November 10th. I'd like to recognize Mayor Pretend Johnson.
I just have a comment. Great job, Emily. You can come before us anytime you want. We like your rezonings.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe that we have generally been approving this. This is a park that we're looking forward to, so we thank you for bringing this forward. If any council members have any questions for staff, go ahead and email them. In the meantime, we look forward to the public hearing on the 27th. We'll see you again then. Thank you, Ms. Langston, and thank you to Kyle and for Jerry for being available.
Thank you, Mayor.
Moving on to our next item, which is item number 10, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. The next, the town's next bulk item pickup is the week of October 19th through 23rd. During that special designated week, residents receiving residential curbside solid waste services may leave a total of five acceptable bulk items outside curbside on their regular trash recycling curbside pickup day. Trick or Treat Trail Trunk Retreat will be held on Saturday, October 24th. The plan is to hold a drive-through event at Morrisville Community Park in conjunction with National Prescription Drug Takeback Day. Virtual Halloween costume contest will also be included. More information will be forthcoming about the event. Keep an eye on our website and social media. November 11th is Veterans Day. All our town offices will be closed. For a full listing of events, you can always find them at our town calendar, www.toundofmorrisville.org. This time we are at item 11, council and manager comments. We have an order for these. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Johnson, followed by myself, and then Councilmember Fender. So Mayor Pretend Johnson.
Thank you. I just have two quick kudos and thank yous. First to Police Chief Andrews and the whole police department for their multiple national night out events last week. They met virtually with neighborhoods that wanted to meet to to hold a virtual national night out. I was fortunate to be able to attend all but one, and that, I, I had a problem getting in for some reason, but they were wonderful. And she did an excellent job communicating with each neighborhood about its unique situation and what car break-ins looked like in their neighborhood or not. We have some neighborhoods that are having more issues than others. So she, she tailored her presentation to each neighborhood and then had several of our officers or sergeants present on different topics. And I'm sorry I missed the one I did, but the rest were all fabulous. So kudos to Chief Andrews and the, and the whole Morrisville Police Department for their efforts with National Night Out. And then today, we held the Crabtree Greenway ribbon cutting for the underpass. And I want to thank our staff for holding such a fabulous event. We were in person, but there were limit to the number of folks that could be there. Everyone was in masks, and we did our part to say, stay socially distanced. And it was a wonderful celebration to to commemorate or to recognize how important this Greenway Underpass is to connect multiple greenways that will get our residents from Morrisville to Umpstead State Park in one direction, and then eventually with a couple of connections in the other direction to the American Tobacco Trail. So significant project that was multiple decades in the works. And I, I really cannot, cannot tell you how happy I am to be able to be here or be there today to, to celebrate the significance of, of that underpass and that opening. Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend. I'm gonna echo the two that you said. I'll start off, however, with the third, which was it was really great to see all our fellow council members in person on Saturday for a little mini retreat as well. And then we got to see them again today for today's ribbon cutting, recognizing the connection of Crabtree Creek and Hatcher Creek Greenways. I encourage everyone in town to come enjoy our 2.5-mile, family-friendly east-west corridor from Davis Drive all the way to Evans Road by foot or on your bicycle, connecting Morrisville Community Park, Crabtree Creek Nature Park, and Cedarport District Park. I also wanted to thank Police Chief Andrews and her staff for the virtual national night out events. Those were great. Also, please continue to remember that we are still in the midst of a pandemic and continue to practice three W's, which are waiting six feet apart, wear a face covering when near people outside your home, and wash your hands often. North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services also encourages all North Carolina residents to download and use the Slow COVID NC app on your smartphones. Please consider doing so today to help us stop the spread so we can re-energize our economy, get back our families back to work, and school sooner and safer. So thank you all for taking those steps to keep us all safe. Now, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rabadi.
Thank you, and I enjoyed seeing all of you guys Saturday and today at the Crabtree Creek ribbon cutting as well. It was beautiful weather for that. So my main comment is, is in regards to October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I think it's pretty significant that the Town of Morrisville is recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. The town has not executed that proclamation since Jackie Holcomb was mayor. And this issue is of vital importance to me for a number of different reasons. One is that I am a survivor of domestic violence myself, and it's something that you never think can happen to you until it does. And it certainly wasn't something that I thought could happen to me. So I want to put it out there that don't think this is happening, that domestic violence is something thing that's happening to other people in a poorer neighborhood or somewhere else, because this happens every day in our own neighborhoods, down the street, to teachers we know, other women and men that we may encounter every day. I mean, like the proclamation references, domestic violence is no, it doesn't choose between socioeconomic status or, or race. Key points that I want to make are if you, if people out there, if you know someone or if you are a victim of domestic violence, please talk to somebody, reach out. We have two nonprofit organizations within Wake County that this is their focus of attention. We have Interactive Wake County, and they provide all sorts of services from counseling to court advocacy, being there in court to help you. They actually helped me when I was in court going for a protection of order, restraining order. So there are resources available, and then specifically also for Town of Morrisville, although this is for all of Wake County, but there's a sister organization to the Interactive Wake County, and that's the Karen of North Carolina. And they focus on helping women in families of South Asian descent. So please, if you know someone or if you are a victim, please tell someone you can call or email me if you need to, or reach out to interact or Karen. Don't, do not remain silent. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
Thank you, Donna. That was very brave, and I really commend you for having the courage to say that. You know, we don't talk about domestic violence enough, and it's, it's so coded in shame and stigma that people suffer for years without ever speaking up. So I, I really can't tell you how impressed I am by what you just said. I also wanted to follow up and mention that domestic violence does not have to mean that someone is hitting you. Curtailing your reproductive freedom, your financial freedom, your economic mobility, demeaning and abusive language, emotional abuse, all are forms of domestic violence. So I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Fender said. Talk to someone. If you're, if you think that you may be in a situation where you're experiencing domestic violence, you don't have to go through it alone. There are people that want to help you. I also wanted to thank staff and everyone who participated in the opening of Crabtree Creek. It's, you know, it's really great to be part of the continuum of councils who has steadily improved life here in Morrisville. These ribbon cuttings and ceremonies are so meaningful to me, and I hope soon to be doing them on projects that I was here for the startup. Haven't done one yet, but I'm really hopeful. And and lastly, I just wanted to thank the, to thank Chief Andrews, as Liz said. I was very disappointed not to be able to participate in any of the nights out because my boss is a big freak, and I had to work until nine o'clock almost every night this week. But I heard so many good things about them from the residents, and I really appreciate all of the staff departments that have gone above and beyond to provide meaningful services for Morrisville residents during this really difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Scruggins Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I, I really want to thank Councilmember Fender for those, for the bravery which she has shown all of us by talking about that. And I just want to thank her a lot for that. My, the issues I was gonna bring up about the Greenway and National Night Outs have already been made. So I just want to talk about two things tonight. First of all, just a reminder that it's also Cyber Security Awareness Month. And I would encourage anybody on our town council or anyone across the region or listening tonight to go to itc.nc.gov where you can learn about cybersecurity. One interesting point is the Cyber 211 line, which the Department of Technology is now talking about, where you can call if you're hit by a cyber crime, or if a town is hit with cyber attack, you can reach out to the State Risk Officer, Maria Thompson, who can actually send the Division of the National Guard to do a free assessment. So just go and learn about, you know, how we can keep ourselves safe. I also just want to thank everyone for a very productive land use work plan session. It was great to see everybody. It was great to see everybody. And as I said earlier, I think that the greatest thing about Morrisville's future is the fact that we can be a live, work, play community. I know there's been resistance about multifamily, but I think their multifamily, if put in the right place, could help support our businesses in retail, which I think is desperately needed. I do like Councilmember John, Mayor Protam Johnson's point about adaptive reuse. I am getting very concerned about, you know, some of our restaurants and places in our shopping plazas in Morrisville that aren't near residential that seem to really be having a tough time. And I think eventually we're going to have to start looking as we redevelop of repurposing those uses. Like for example, Earth Fair, you know, they've gone out of business. Could we take that and make it sort of an agricultural center? You know, I mean, just, you know, different ideas come to mind. Many of our residents come from different parts of the world. So I think transit and higher dense housing are common. So I think we should be open to that, but also understanding that there may be places in Morrisville where we have to slow down some of this growth to accommodate traffic and school issues. And the final reminder is just the fact of, I brought this up point before, but you know, I think it's interesting that Raleigh has 12 public companies and the town of Morrisville has 10. And so many of these companies are going to be hiring and growing after the pandemic and they're even growing now. Many of them are life sciences and we've talked about that today. And I think that that just even more of a reason for a live, work, play environment. So just want to thank everyone for a great meeting and it's been, it's been a long year, but we're, we should be proud as a team that we're getting a lot done and each and every one of you have been responsible for that. So thank you, along with the staff.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank our Chief of Police, Patrice Andrews, for a spectacular effort for National Night Out. I was also fortunate enough to attend several of those sessions and the messaging was clear that they are really doing what they can to support us and to educate us. And I hope that each of the communities takes the recorded session and makes that available to the entire neighborhood because there's messaging there that maybe not everybody could attend when it was being held initially, but there are, there's really strong messaging out there about what you can do today to help your neighborhood be safe and how to communicate most effectively with each other. So that, I really do appreciate that. And I also wanted to say, I really appreciate the candor of our, of Councilmember Fender. And I think it's important that we be mindful of our, you know, circumstances and situations and reach out if you need help and it, and there's no shame in speaking up. So I do really appreciate that. And then finally, on a good note, it was a spectacular ribbon cutting today for our, you know, the Greenway connection and that wonderful bridge that allows us to continuously walk, bike, take a stroller throughout our town. So if you hadn't had a chance to go and look at all the wonderful areas of the greenways within the town of Morrisville, I encourage you to do so. But we just really hit a significant milestone today and I'm very proud of all the work that the staff and all of the various parties have done over the years to make this a reality. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thanks, DJ. I echo the same. Thanks, Donna, for speaking up. And it was, it was very, what is the right word to say? It's very touching and I totally understand because I have helped several in the same situation. Thanks for sharing. And the other thing I wanted to say was in regards to beautiful ribbon cutting and I had not, I'll be honest, I have never been to that area and it has opened up my eyes and I will be now going more and walking at the, the new, you know, trails. And the last thing I want to, kudos to the fire chief, like fire chief for basically convincing the theory and to Brandon for helping us all understand because I had a lot of concerns last week, last session. And then that was very, very helpful going through how they explained me and how I could, I could take it in my mind. And, and also for the police and the chief for doing an excellent night, National Night Out. It was very well received by all the communities. I have one good news to share was residents of Breckenridge had a lot of concerns with the pedestrian safety, especially near the Northwest Park, like an anticipation that Lou Stephen will be passing. So it will be pretty much splitting the neighborhood into two pieces. We have one sub-association behind there. They all petitioned and then as an HOA, we had written to them and they came back agreeing, which they have not done, recently having a four-way stop. That basically helps a lot of the residents and their kids who can walk to the park. And that was my kudos to the entire community for, you know, petitioning and emailing and thanks to Martha and Brandon for walking that area and trying to understand it too. Martha, I have sent you and Brandon a copy from the DOT in that regard. That's all from me.
Okay. Thank you. I'd also like to echo Councilmember Fender's, thank you for sharing your experience. I hope your bravery helps someone help, seek help for themselves. Now I'll turn it over to staff, Town Manager Paige. Are there any comments from staff for the go to the order?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you. Two, I don't normally do this, but I would also like to extend my thanks and that of staff for council taking the time to not only be together really for the first time since March, and I think we talked about that during the meeting, that we were all in the same room together, but for having a really productive work session on our land use plan and coming together for the reason it was scheduled, which is to talk to each other, not just hear staff presentations. So I really think it advanced our work. Secondarily, but related is at council's request during that meeting, staff has drafted a letter to the RDU Airport Authority. That letter was sent to you earlier this morning. I've gotten some good feedback on that about following up to invite the airport representatives to a meeting with council to talk about issues of mutual interest and further that discussion. So if you have not shared with me any thoughts or input, please do that so that we can issue that formal invitation to them. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now at item 12, work session. We have one work session this evening, CIP policy discussions, draft town center and greenways policies. Our Town Manager Martha Page will facilitate this discussion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I am subbing in for Jeannie tonight. She was not able to attend the meeting this evening. I present differently than Jeannie, so you're going to get a streamlined synthesized version of two CIP draft policies, one related to our town center and one related to greenways. That would be the second and third of five placeholders that we put into our budget in past years to really encapsulate what council's vision for those pretty major future capital improvement areas would be. So we, we also streamlined it a little bit differently rather than reviewing the comments that you had individually given to us prior. We did attach that to the item, but we went ahead and tried to incorporate as much of that into a policy draft and that is what you have for you tonight in both cases. At this point, I would like to think that the policies are looking a little familiar. They are formatted very similarly to the land acquisition you've talked about in a couple meetings. The, the first section really being to sort of outline the purpose, the vision, the overarching, what are you trying to accomplish? It, it doesn't talk about how you're going to accomplish it, but it talks about the things that you're trying to accomplish. The second section, which I won't spend hardly any time on, is just definitions that help others perhaps understand what we're talking about. We often get very used to talking about those things and forget that sometimes the public is not as up to date with what we're talking about as we are. So the definitions is to help explain what we're talking about. The third section is really the priorities. And again, this is, this is guidance to both council and to staff about how you're going to consider discussions of this topic as well as balance and incorporate and integrate them with your other policy areas. It does outline things in particular that staff can do to, to help you advance your overarching goals. It tries to delineate what might be the more immediate things that we address versus the more long-term priorities, but also provides the flexibility to take advantage of those opportunities as they come along. But as you're, as you're making big decisions, the goal is, you've come together and decided how you're going to talk about those things together. So that's what the priority section is for both of those areas. We also talk about the funding areas and all of our, excuse me, I've skipped over process. Process is, is really some of the efforts that we do to provide information and guidance to council as we go along and do that work. It is not one time. It's not always immediate. It's, it's again, on a continuation of things. And as you explore and advance your discussions, those things will be influenced as well. But it, it provides that framework for what's supposed to happen next, again, both at the staff level and at the council level and what tools we feel like we have that can help you assess the future funding. And then I'll go to that area, funding. We have some very specific ways that we can pay for our projects. You've heard me say before, you have to plan, not only for the short term, but the long term to accomplish your vision. Some tools are much more appropriate for some types of investments versus others. That depends on the size of the investment. That depends on the immediacy of the, the needs. Erin, would you go? I've skipped ahead way back to section five, please. And this is the town center one. We'll go into the greenways in just a minute. And then six is, is really reflective of, for most of our capital investment decisions, there's ongoing operating costs, staff costs that you always want to take into consideration. Staff would never want to bring you something and not give you the full picture of both the immediate cost and what it costs you long-term to care or maintain for an asset or provide the support and resources that it needs. And I've provided that framework in general for both policies. Town center is layered with a lot of the additional discussions you're already talking about, about not only the demonstration project, but the, the bigger vision. And the demonstration project is just an example of a short-term, short-term portion of a long-term vision and, and trade-offs you might consider to get things started versus accomplishing all of your goals right at one time and also recognizing that you have many areas of interest that have to be balanced and, and planned for and paid for. With the greenways policy, I'm just going to sort of, Erin, if you would go directly to where it illustrates the, the transportation plan, it's after section six. One of the improvements we made to really capture our greenways in a more defined and specific way was put them in our transportation plan that was adopted a couple of years ago. They meet multiple purposes related to some of our transportation goals and objectives and, and really try to define those in a transportation setting. Again, I'll loosely say a roadmap for those that help enhance our connectivity, not only to our own network, but to our regional network and those efforts that we make to really connect our whole community, not just parts of our community. And then behind those draft policies, again, we've, we've just provided what was your individual input that we've tried to incorporate into these draft policies. I'm really going to stop there and see if there's specific questions council wants to ask from your review. Could also suggest that either Jeannie or I, as you review them again, could answer any specific questions or, or consider things that you think might be missing or might need to be tweaked as we try to pull these together into a briefing item. Staff, there's two additional areas, but we think we could get these three into a briefing for you. It does lead to continued work that you're doing and that we have scheduled for your CIP discussions, prioritization and continued discussion of our bond referendums. And I'm going to stop there and see if I can answer any questions or go into any further detail on any particular area.
Well, I for one appreciate the format, being consistent throughout all our policies. And I really appreciate all the work that went in and the feedback that was taken to create these two. Looking for people in chat who want to make comments or questions at this time. Okay, Martha, pass it back to you.
All right. So I would just offer, we will be obviously preparing for our next agenda over the next couple of weeks. Jeannie and I can get together to start putting together a briefing. If you have any questions or comments that we could answer over the next week, that would be helpful to us. Otherwise, we will proceed. I haven't looked at the October 27th schedule yet, but we'll, we'll start putting these into a briefing item for you to consider actually adopting these policies if that is council's desire.
So these two plus the land acquisition that we've already reviewed a couple of times, correct?
Yes, sir.
Not seeing any comments with that having any issue. We have an affirmation from the Mayor Protam that I believe that we are looking forward to as a group affirming these. So thank you very much once again for preparing them.
Thank you.
And thank you to Jeannie as well, Ms. Hooks. At this time, does the staff have anything for the go to the order before we entertain a motion to go into closed session?
No, sir.
Okay. We have one closed session this evening to discuss matters relating to economic development. At this time, I would ask for a motion to enter into closed session. I recognize Councilmember Rao, please.
Thank you. I just put in the chat. Mayor and council pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A5, a move that we go into closed session to discuss an economic development matter.
Like to recognize Mayor Protam Johnson.
I will second that.
Thank you very much. Town Clerk Smith, if you could please do a roll call vote to take us into closed session. Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Hawley?
Aye.
Motion enter closed session, passage unanimously. Okay. Okay. Thank you to staff. We will now be entering closed session. We will stay on this Teams meeting, and we're asking all nonessential staff to please remove yourselves. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break while that happens. Please reconvene at 9:46.